Oh, no. I'm not going to do that. All of this is all I did. This is then this is.
She's got them where I am.
Yeah, I think so.
I got so much fit here.
Do you know why you're on the table? You know what I mean by that phrase, "fucking rich"?
I do.
She was just looking for me.
She's such a sweetheart. She's a good girl.
But actually, she's starting to get project from the road.
Here we go.
It's 7:01. Call the meeting to order, please. We stand for good.
Yeah, I'm.
I pledge allegiance to the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, pursuant to the open public meeting. Meeting. It was also posted in the municipal building. The joining board secretary will go any further. Is there a motion to appoint Jen Serino and as an alternate Stephanie Garbola?
I make that motion.
Secretary?
I.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Jen, you can take role now.
Okay. Chairman Grebner?
Here.
Mr. Iglesias asked to be excused. Mr. Gattano? Mr. Leo asked to be ex- asked to be excused. Dana DeCesare?
Yep.
Jim Ketchum?
Here.
Andrew Hamel?
Here. Okay. One more?
Uh, there was Justin Feliceva that says ask to be excused.
Okay, in the absence of Anthony Gattano, we... Are open. Okay, gentlemen, the minutes of the previous meetings are a motion to approve the...
I make that motion.
Motion by Dana DeCesare, second by Jim Ketchum. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. ZB 22-09, in the name of Paul Chapasco. And this one is seeking a multivariate for the fence.
If I ask, uh, that matter for, uh, there's a matter for James Pecone. It was originally listed, when I got the phone, you said it the other day, was listed first. Uh, I would ask if it's possible, I think that was going to be a much shorter... I would ask if nobody has any objection, that we take that one first. My client, I'm representing both, both Chapasco as well as Pecone, so...
You are representing Pecone as well?
That's correct.
Okay. We'll do Pecone.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testament you're about to give.
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, speak into the microphone, please.
James John Pecone Jr., 824 Thoroughly.
Thank you. Mike, everything, all those papers in order?
Yes, they are.
I ask that your professionals are going to be testifying, also be sworn.
I'm sorry to hear.
Yeah, I ask that your professionals, Sony Officer Reverend Ross is going to be sworn, be sworn to...
To testify.
Our engineer and plan are...
Yeah, he's, he's...
Our engineer and plan are sworn in the beginning of the year, for all areas. But if Gary, our Sony Officer Reverend Ross, would have testified, he could be sworn.
Sir?
Well, I just want you to have the...
Yes.
So we... She's excused us.
We understand, okay. Just speak loud, please.
Okay.
Into the microphone.
I have a big mouth. James Pecone, uh, that Mr. Pecone owns, is on Ferguson Avenue. A copy of this plan was given tonight, uh, given tonight, uh, to your engineer. This, this plan is a plan from 2016. This is when the, the... And they sub, and they subdivided, through the planning word, they subdivided, all the property belonged Ferguson Avenue. I got involved in, uh... I was asked by the Quetos to, uh, prepare the subdivision deeds and do the transfers of property to the various, uh, family members. All of... Which is somewhat improved, uh, and maintained, and I believe, under the, uh, the right-of-way is with the township. Uh, the... All the properties, except for Jim's property, at the very end of the, uh, development, and pretty much a property next door, Lot 1.04. Jim is 1.05, correct?
Yes.
Um, you should speak up loud, too, when you... ...fronting on the, uh, on this Ferguson Avenue. At this point, Jim is getting ready to build his house on Lot 1.05. And the request that's being made tonight is that, um, in doing so, it... For the township especially, and we'll present on the testimony, but, uh, it doesn't make any sense to extend Ferguson Avenue as a township street in front of, of Jim's property, because doing that, it's going nowhere. It's going directly into, uh, Lot 38, Lot 301. The road. So there's, there's no access issue with that, with that lot. So there, and likewise, there was a question was raised by, by, uh, your engineer with regard to, uh, access to any utilities,ments that are out in that... Need for that. Uh, Jim would testify that there is no access needed for that. The only reason to extend Ferguson Avenue any further is so Jim has access to, uh, Ferguson Avenue. As the, as the application for the variance indicates, uh, by doing... House, uh, on an unimproved street. So we need the variance in order to, uh, build his house on this, on this property. Uh, suggestion was made, and if the board feels necessary, uh, we will ultimately have to apply to the, to... That portion of the street. Uh, but at this point in time, in order for him to be able to get started, we're asking...
How can you maintain the street? Don't you have to use part of it to get into the driveway?
Well, that, well, the application indicates that, uh, as it's shown... The street would go in front of Lot 1.04, which is next door, and it would come up to the driveway and into the driveway. So up to that point, where it goes into the driveway, the street is actually going to...
Does the road stop now, 1.04? Is it the whole frontage of 1.04? Have a paved road?
No. It actually stops in front of Jim, uh, 1.01.
Correct.
Uh, it stops right before my property. Do you have the, uh, do you have the old subdivision?
I have something that, that's so small, it's very hard to see.
There should have been larger plans.
But I see, I, I got it now. I see this little circle there or something.
Some of the 36, but do you have, yeah, is there any more? There were six of them.
There was, they were all submitted anyway.
How, how, what is the right-of-way, the, the road right-of-way there at? Because I, it's too small for us to read that.
Uh, that, that... Plan that was submitted, the part of the application, or do you have the old plan? We, we received the old plan from archives. You should have.
I have that.
Yes. That was submitted, but this, this old plan that you referenced previously is not provided.
Did you see this one? This is the old subdivision.
Is this, is this what we have here?
No. That's, they got the wrong, they don't even have...
Get around the, we submitted it. Yeah, they should, they should, that's incorrect.
That's not right. You have thirty-four.
Uh, John? No, I, I, we have so many papers here tonight.
Oh, we have that.
We just got, no, we don't have that.
Oh, so the baby end's there. This isn't just Lot... We have, we have.
This area is currently cleared out for a circle, so...
Yeah. So, so, Counselor, you...
The, uh, the old plan, the old subdivision plan, had the cul-de-sac... In front of what is Lot 1.01, and then partially on, in front of the next lot, which is 1.04, and then Jim is at 1.05. And it was partially improved, so... Truck, school buses, coming down the street, would be able to, uh, come down the street all the way and have the proper access to turn around and get back off of Ferguson Avenue. The proposal, which was raised, which, uh, your engineer... Turnaround is actually being moved further towards where it actually is now. When it was actually built, uh, Jim, this turnaround was actually built closer to Lot 1.05?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, and I submitted... Testing conditions.
I remember there being some issues years back with this, because the buses couldn't turn, the fire trucks couldn't turn, that, that was why they created whatever they did there, that little turnaround. Probably... differs now, you're just moving it further west.
Well, there's two things in that. It's going to be moved further west, number one. Number two, there was never a request for an actual easement given to the township, so that they, so that that turnaround could actually be used. Township or by anybody else as a turnaround. And number three, uh, there will be improvements made to that, based upon what the, which the plan we just indicated to you. Uh, they're working with the engineers, uh, in order to give a proper turnaround and a proper... The turnaround will be as if it's part of Ferguson Avenue, so it'll have the same improvements as what's on Ferguson Avenue, but it'll become closer to Jim's property, so that a, a vehicle doesn't have to, a fire truck as an example, or a school bus, doesn't have to go past... Where it was going to be. Go all the way up to Jim's property, and then have to back up and then go down, around, around the turnaround.
We have the, the fire chief here, so I, you know, I, we respect his comments on getting emergency equipment down.
And it's, uh, the engineers, we're talking about what needs to be done, so that the proper, uh, proposed 40-foot radius paved turnaround would be put, put there, uh, where it is being used now, so that there will be the proper... Snowplows would be able to come up there, would not have any, and then we would have an extension of the street over to the driveway, uh, for Lot 1.05.
And to add the, the existing turnaround, it's, you know, stone, the previous turnaround was stone, gravel, mud is an issue, I'm sure with the tracking that, onto the pavement, that area is typically, you know, there, you know, there's mud on the roadway.
I get the fact that there is no question, I want to make sure I understand where the edge of the pavement is now. If you go to the border, the border of Lot 1.04, so the entire frontage of 1.01 is paved? It looks like...
It's pretty much, it's pretty... That's why the question that was raised by, in the engineer's report, was why are we pushing it further west? Which brings it in front of 1.04. There's no, and 1.04 is owned by your aunt. Correct. And your aunt has agreed to give you the easement, whatever easement's needed for that turnaround.
Uh, yeah, she's, uh, here in the, you know, room as well.
So that, so that the easement, which would be dedicated to township, however you want it set up, will be, as it's shown, it would be proposed 65-foot turnaround easement. Uh, and there's a radius inside proposed radius paved turnaround. And the engineers will work together to be able to make sure that anybody that's coming down on the road, uh, will be able to, to do that. I mean, reverse?
The turnaround, the turnaround should be further west. The turnaround, the, it should be on Mr. Pecone's property, not on 1.04.
It, it can go there, it's, we were trying to do it... You don't need it to go that far. He doesn't need the, the, the road frontage. And then, if you do it that way, then what's all, all going to happen is, from the township, the township, snowplows, we're going to have to go all the way down to the end of the property, going nowhere, and then do the turnaround from there. Uh, fire trucks going to go all the way to the end of the property, school bus is going to have to go to the end of Jim's property.
It's only 177 feet, all the way to the end.
Well, it is.
The, the fire trucks are 50 feet or more.
So would the, uh, would the township assist with that paving then, only? I mean, does the township assist with the paving of the road?
With paving of your, the road in front of your house?
For, I mean, the turnaround for the township? Or does it need to have a turnaround?
That's the safe thing to have, there's no... If you have children and the bus comes, what happens then?
You, you...
How's the bus turn, get, pick up your children?
What they're doing it now is they're, they're using the turnaround around the, the existing.
Yeah, the third turnaround. I mean, it could just be a gravel turnaround then, right? I mean, it could be gravel road, there's gravel roads in town. I mean, is that, is that a possibility then?
I mean...
Is it gravel? I mean, gravel turnaround?
That's, that's why you're here, because you don't, you, you want to keep it stone or gravel, correct? You don't want to pave it.
No, I want to pave, I want to improve the, the road, then, you know, so I can build a home, but this is improving the turnaround now for the township already, and I'm just asking for a little piece for my driveway. I mean, I don't really see the sense of extending the road to go nowhere.
You want to extend, you want to extend the pavement?
What's that?
You want to extend that, and pave that turnaround?
Correct. I'm going to pay, I'm extending what's there, the, the edge of pavement, the edge of pavement on this plan, right? That's, that's existing. So, that's Lot 4, or Block 401, Lot 1.01. And then it's all dirt through Lot 1.04, where the new turn, where the turnaround that's now being used by the township, um, which is gravel, potholes, and, I mean, if you take a turnaround through there, to get back on the edge of the pavement, you're jumping, I mean, I could keep, I, I would keep it the way it is, but me driving in and out of there every day, going to work, I don't want to be hitting all these potholes to get back on Ferguson Avenue, so...
I, I thought you were not wanting to improve it at all with, with asphalt.
No, I want to.
So you've, you, I see it here and now, but I didn't see it on...
This is, I'm proposing, we're paving, the, out there existing conditions, it stops at edge of pavement at Lot 1.01.
And Ferguson dead ends there, it's not, that's the end of it.
Dirt end one.
That's the end of it.
The, the turnaround that's there now, it's dirt. It's dirt, compacted from the truck strap, you know, every, just all the heavy machinery going around there, you know, and then, uh, like I said... It's muddy, I can't even, you know, when I go to that property, you know, I gotta, I can't, you know, the trucks, you know, just any vehicle go down, that goes down there, it gets filthy, you know?
So what's the positive reason for, for doing that?
Positive, I mean, that it's going to have a nice clean turnaround there for the township, and I just need a little turn, so I can get into my property, and the driveway that's going to be going into my property is wide enough and convenient enough for any township vehicles that might need to access my property if there was an emergency from, you know, any fire or police, you know, spots.
Your truck will be taken out to Ferguson Avenue?
I could bring it right to the, uh, circle there. And my man, yeah, school bus, kids right there, I mean, the school buses will have plenty of turnaround. Now, I'm sure if you have some, I, I was there at my property at one point, and there was buses turning around, and they would have, they can't completely turn around, they gotta turn, back up, turn around, and then that's how with the old turnaround, too, that was even worse. You know? Partial, part, you know, part of that prop, land for that turnaround, for that use.
Probably 40 feet isn't even enough to turn something around, is it? That's, I mean, it's better than...
I mean, that's an 80 foot, I mean, it's 80-foot diameter, though, that's 40-foot radius.
65-foot turnaround easement.
So what is the, the spec for the roads here?
Off, off end, off end, they'll have to meet the RSIS requirements, and Jim, from our offices, or as spoken, as our design engineer, and they need to provide calculations for variance calculations. They provided a layout, um, on their variance plan for what's going to be generally proposed, but we have no calculations for the roadway, nor any gradient improvements. Based on their layout, they would have to work with our office in order to conform with RSIS and the township requirements.
And what is that thickness? Because, I mean, they, they don't have to go crazy with paving, I mean, that...
No. I believe, I believe the township standard is, uh, four, three, and one and a half for cross-section grass.
Because 95% of the roads, in fact, with township, just have two inches on top of them. That's what they have.
Yeah.
That we travel down every day.
An engineer report indicates that it's only a paper street, so apparently the, the, what's existing right now, this, is not, uh, like a regular township road. Uh, so, I mean, they'll, they're going to improve it. The, the alternative is, we, he goes and he gets a permit to build in, on, in, on his property with the township street in front of him, and then, the big problem that exists is that... Or the school buses, or, uh, the trash removal, drives all the way down in front of his property, picks up whatever is picked up, and then they got to back all the way down, because really, that easement was never, never, uh, put in, on anywhere as a legal easement. So what, the alternative is, without coming in this, without asking for a variance, he's going to, he's going to front on, on Ferguson, he's allowed to put a house on there, and all that, all that does at that point is makes it harder for the township. And then the township, if the township has a plow, it's going to plow that, all that end of it for, for no reason. It's not going anywhere.
You say all that, it's not very big, you know, it's, it's...
No, but it...
It's 170 feet.
Well, a fire truck has to go down, they go down, to go all the way down there for whatever reason, and then they got to back all the way back out off of, through Ferguson Avenue.
Yeah. Going to do is, we're going to, you're going to have an easement here on Lot 1.04, right?
Correct.
For that cul-de-sac, or whatever that is.
Correct.
You're going to pave the road according to the engineer's specifications?
The engineers have both spoken, uh, Jim Winkowski and, uh, CES engineers have spoken, and they're, and they're going to get together and make it what has to be done there. And then he's just extending down the rest of it over to his proposed driveway, and then the driveway itself, of course, is going to be his property, and it's, everything's done there is himself. The basin that's there...
In part for this room, or for this circle, the infiltration basin that's on my property is for the runoff and stormwater management for this circle, from what I've been told, from my engineers.
You're hoping you can get the water to that, right?
Well, with, with piping, that's, that's part of my point before, is they, they show the general layout of what they're going to do, but the structure is still going to be shown. I, I just want to bring to light, I believe, and you touched upon it before, um, if their desire is not to improve the whole extent of Ferguson Avenue, considerations we made petition the governing body to vacate the remaining portion, if utility access is not needed for that utility easement, um, existing, or chasing for a lot.
And the utility company, did, did they ever use any portion of, as far as you know, Ferguson Avenue?
No.
To get to the utility easement?
No, there's, well, I know there's a stretch of power lines that run along my property, and for the... Been dirt piles, and only really quads can get through there to really access the power lines. It's usually quads, dirt piles getting through there.
James, is that what's showing in the picture here? It's kind of hard to see, it's black and white, is that on the end of the easement road there? I'm sorry, the, uh, the end of Ferguson Avenue?
Yeah.
It looks like, it looks like there's a couple, like, piles in there.
Yeah, so this is the start of my property?
Right.
The pile was here, so I, I cleared this prop, I cleared that lot.
It even looks like there's still some more in the back there.
Right, I just kind of moved a little bit of that dirt, moved back, but that's, that's just... I've, I know.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we open to the public.
Second.
By Dana.
Second.
Seconded by Andy Hamel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the extensions. Is anyone from the public like to be heard regarding this matter?
Oh, Lydia. Oh, Lydia.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testament you're about to...
I put 48 Jefferson Road, Elmer.
Speak up.
Elmer.
Can I speak up?
Oh, then I put 48 Jefferson Road, Elmer, New Jersey.
Okay.
And I own the property next to James still.
1.04?
Yes, 1.104. And I was 101, too, but now my other daughter has it. But, so we had the turnaround at my property, her, mine, and then, uh, because it was making a mess out of the, her driveway, because we had paved, and it was, everybody was just making mess, the trucks, the buses, it was just dirt everywhere all the time. So, my husband Gary puts, moved everything back and took, he did all the work. He took everything down, trees, and put it into his property, just to make it easier for the buses, for, for everybody to move down there.
So you're okay with the easement in the property?
Yes, because it helps, just helps, and keeping... With the, you know, when the buses aren't there, nothing's there, like in the summer, the kids like to go play, you know, in a cold attack if it's, and it's right there, you can all see it.
There's not a ton of traffic?
There's no, really no traffic, except people...
Public.
Trying to go back there, and then, you know, just public.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Not to a motion to...
I make a motion, we close to the public.
Motion by Dana DeCesare.
Second.
Seconded by Jim Ketchum, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand. Any other comments, gentlemen? Mike, you have any comments?
Did we cover all of your, um, comments?
Uh, yeah, from a planning perspective, I think they've addressed everything here. They're really, um, in terms of the house itself and the lot itself, there are no variances needed whatsoever. The only problem they have here is the lack of access to a, uh, improved street. They have enough frontage on a paper street right now, so that's technically not a variance. It says there's a section of the code that specifically says a building permit shall not be issued if they're not, not fronted on a properly improved street, but that's the only relief they need tonight, so it's a purely an issue of access. Uh, I, hopefully, it seems to me they're, um, the engineers can figure out proper access and proper turnaround there. Uh, the only question we had, so I looked at the plans and saw they were moving a cul-de-sac from one location to another location, and it was all on somebody else's property, so my primary concern is both... Approves of it, and it sounds as if she does. That addresses my own concern.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I, I have to say is that, you know, when you get together with the engineer, I, I don't think we should overkill this road for that.
Understood.
So, I mean, we're not building a highway, is what I'm saying.
Understood.
Any others? Mike, Kevin?
Just, if this, the, um, Miss Palaney's law follows, or the ordinance follows the Miss Palaney's law, that, I don't know, if they show hardship or a reason why they don't need to have the frontage paved or have access, they just have to show they have access, it's, um, appropriate for emergency use. So as long as that cul-de-sac is paved, and it's in the radius necessary, then, I'm over that.
Good.
I can get into my property and the driveway that's going to be going into my property is wide enough and convenient enough for any township vehicles that might need to access my property if there was an emergency from, you know, any fire or police, you know.
Your truck will be taken out to Ferguson Avenue.
I could bring it right to the circle there.
And.
And my man, yeah, school bus, kids were right there. I mean, the school buses will have plenty of turnaround. Now, I'm sure if you had some, I was there at my property at one point and there was buses turning around and they would have, they can't completely turn around. They gotta turn, back up, turn around. And then that's how with the old turnaround too, that was even worse. You know. Partial part, you know, part of that prop land for that turnaround, for that use.
Probably forty feet isn't even enough to turn something around, is it? That's, I mean, it's better than.
I mean, that's an eighty foot, I mean, it's eighty foot diameter though. That's forty foot radius.
Sixty-five foot turnaround easement.
So what is the spec for the roads here?
Offhand, offhand, they'll have to meet the RSIS requirements and Jim from our offices are a design engineer and they need to provide calculations for variance calculations. They provided a layout on their variance plan for what's going to be generally proposed, but we have no calculations for the roadway nor any drainage improvements. Based on their layout, they would have to work with our office in order to conform with RSIS and the township requirements.
And what is that thickness? Because, I mean, they don't have to go crazy with paving. I mean, that.
No. I believe the township standard is four, three and one and a half for cross-section grass.
Because ninety-five percent of the roads, in fact, with township, just have two inches on top of them. That's what they have, that we travel down every day.
An engineering report indicates that it's only a paper street. So apparently the, what's existing right now is not like a regular township road. So, I mean, they're going to improve it. The alternative is we, he goes and he gets a permit to build on his property with these township street in front of him. And then the big problem that exists is that. Or the school buses or the trash removal drives all the way down in front of his property, picks up whatever is picked up, and then they gotta back all the way down because really that easement was never, never put in on anywhere as a legal easement. So the alternative is without coming in this, without asking for a variance, he's gonna, he's gonna front on Ferguson, he's allowed to put a house on there and all that, all that does at that point is makes it harder for the township. And then the township, if the township has a plow, it's gonna plow that, all that end of it for, for no reason. It's not going anywhere.
You say all that. It's not very big. You know, it's, it's.
No, but.
It's a hundred and seventy feet.
But a fire truck has to go down and go down to, go all the way down there for whatever reason, and then they gotta back all the way back out off of, through Ferguson Avenue.
Yeah. What you're gonna do is we're gonna, you're gonna have an easement here on lot 1.04, right?
Correct.
For that cul-de-sac or whatever that is. You're gonna pave the road according to the engineer specifications?
The engineers have both spoken. Jim Winkowski and CES engineers have spoken and they're, and they're going to get together and make it what has to be done there. And then he's just extending down the rest of it over to his proposed driveway. And then the driveway itself, of course, is going to be his property and everything's done there is himself. The basin that's there.
In part for this room or for this circle, the infiltration basin that's on my property is for the runoff and stormwater management for this circle, from what I've been told from my engineers.
You're hoping you can get the water to that, right?
Well, with, with piping, that's, that's part of my point before is they, they show the general layout of what they're gonna do, but the structure is still to be shown. I just want to bring to light, I believe, and you touched upon it before, if their desire is not to improve the whole extent of Ferguson Avenue, considerations we made petition the governing body to vacate the remaining portion if utility access is not needed for that utility easement existing or chasing for a lot.
And the utility company, did they ever use any portion of, as far as you know, Ferguson Avenue?
No.
To get to the utility easement?
No, there's, well, I know there's a stretch of power lines that run along my property and for the. Then dirt piles and only really quads can get through there to really access the power lines. It's usually quads, dirt piles getting through there.
James, is that what's showing in the picture here? It's kind of hard to see. It's black and white. Is that on the end of the easement road there? I'm sorry, the, the end of Ferguson Avenue. It looks like, it looks like there's a couple like piles in there.
Yeah, so this is the start of my property.
Right.
The pile was here. So I cleared this property.
It even looks like there's still some more in the back there.
Right. I just kind of moved a little bit of that dirt and moved back. But that's, that's just.
Thank you.
I make a motion. We open to the public.
Second.
Motion by Dana.
Second.
Seconded by Andy Hamel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Is anyone from the public likely to be heard regarding this matter?
Oh, Lydia.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Raise your hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about.
I put forty-eight Jefferson Road, Elmer, Elmer.
Speak up.
Oh, then I put forty-eight Jefferson Road, Elmer, New Jersey. And I own the property next to James still.
One point oh four?
Yes, one point one oh four. And I was one oh one too, but now my other daughter has it. But, so we had the turnaround at my property, her mine. And then because it was making a mess out of the, her driveway, because we had paved and it was, everybody was just making mess, the trucks, the buses, it was just dirt everywhere all the time. So my husband Gary puts moved everything back and took, he did all the work. He took everything down, trees, went into his property, just to make it easier for the buses, for everybody to move down there.
So you're okay with the easement in the property?
Yes, because it helps, just helps. And keeping. With the, you know, when the buses aren't there, nothing's there. Like in the summer, the kids like to go play, you know, in a cold attack if it's, and it's right there where you can all see it.
There's not a ton of traffic.
There's no.
At the end of that road.
Really no traffic except people.
Public.
Trying to go back there and then, you know, just public.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
I make a motion. We close to the public.
Motion by Danny DeCesary.
Second.
Seconded by Jim Ketchum. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other comments, gentlemen? Mike, you have any comments?
Did we cover all of your comments?
Yeah, from a planning perspective, I think they've addressed everything here. They're really, in terms of the house itself and the lot itself, there are no variances needed whatsoever. The only problem they have here is the lack of access to a improved street. They have enough frontage on a paper street right now, so that's technically not a variance. It says there's a section of the code that specifically says a building permit shall not be issued if they're not on a frontage on a properly improved street. But that's the only relief they need tonight. So it's purely an issue of access. I, hopefully it seems to me they're, the engineers can figure out proper access and proper turnaround there. The only question we had, so I looked at the plans and saw they were moving a cul-de-sac from one location to another location. It was all on somebody else's property. So my primary concern is both. Approves of it, and it sounds as if she does. That addresses my own concerns.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have to say is that, you know, when you get together with the engineer, I don't think we should overkill this road for that.
Understood.
So, I mean, we're not building a highway, is what I'm saying.
Understood.
Any others? Mike, give it up.
Just the, the Miss Palanies Law follows, or the ordinance follows the Miss Palanies Law that if they show hardship or a reason why they don't need to have the frontage paved or have access, they just have to show they have access that's appropriate for emergency . So as long as that cul-de-sac is paved and it's in the radius necessary, then.
Good. I, I make a motion. We approve ZB twenty-two thirteen with the conditions of the road meets the standard. Everything is properly.
I second that motion.
Just the roadway and drainage, is that going to be the condition that you recommend?
Yeah, that's it.
No highways.
Glorified driveway.
Motion by Dana DeCesary, seconded by Andy Hamel. Roll call.
Dana DeCesary?
Yes.
Jim Ketchum?
Yes.
Andrew Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Greivner?
I just, I just want to say that when we originally got these plans, you could not see that that was being paved. We thought that none of that was getting paved there. And. Resins to improve the road. So it's, it's, it's good. So I think we need better plans submitted to us so we can actually see that.
I thought they were submitted.
I think they were. So I have a copy, but it took me about ten minutes to find it. There's four hundred papers up here today. So, I mean, I did find this copy, which I could.
We submitted larger plans, right?
Yeah, but they went to the professionals.
It wasn't.
Say, well, I'm a yes, so.
Okay.
Motion approved. So, move on.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is ZB twenty-two dash oh nine in the name of Paul Chapaska. Mike, everything?
Yes, I think I'm gonna take a couple moments to. They're related. So purposefully, I'm understanding that and anything that goes on. So the first application, same applicant and the same property, Chapaska represented by Mr. Schwartz, is for a fence eight feet height, which is not permitted in a residential zone. Your second application tonight is a request for an appeal of a zoning officer's decision that produced of that same property home occupation. They are related because the compliance with the fence ordinance is one of the conditions of a home occupation. So I don't want the board to view this in a void. It is two separate applications. You're gonna hear two separate. And there'll be a separate resolution for each one regardless of what may decide. So I want to make sure that the board understands this, that this is related. So the eighth fence that requesting is not permitted in the zone, only a four-foot fence on residential properties is permitted. And this is the same property, but the denial was made based partially upon the fact that the zoning officer found a commercial use ongoing and therefore the fence would appear to be for commercial.
So we're not dealing with that on this application. We're dealing with the fence.
Correct. We're just dealing with the fence application. But they are related in that sense because one of the conditions that Mr. Schwartz mentions in this. Fence must comply if he's gonna comply with home occupation. So the fence is.
And was, was the public notified?
The fence application, yes.
Yes. Not on the appeal?
Not on the appeal, but I knew a lot of people were aware of it because of this. And we'll have an opportunity to speak on that separate one as well. So I wanted to try to speak on the first one.
All right, Mr. Schwartz.
Senator Schwartz, Senator Schwartz representing the applicant on this. Let me first say that as we go along with this, I do have some objections with pardon me, but I will be raising it because I know that as the township has already done, we are. Superior Court on matters involving this and other aspects of, of this property, we're in the municipal court on other aspects of this. We're in front of the zoning board. The zoning board we brought because when I got involved, Mr. Chapaska originally went in, pled guilty to the original violations. When he came to me, I said, there are no violations at this point. We sat down and we met with the township solicitor. We said, we met with the zoning officer. We would sit down and meet with the zoning officer to find out what, what was needed to be done in order to come to the various boards, do what we need to do. At that point in time, dealing with what we're dealing with today, what was pointed out was because of the fence, the way the fence exists for that being that eight foot, we needed to come to the zoning board to get a, the, the fence variance for the height of the fence. The fence can be lowered, there'll be testimony as to why it is eight foot, but that's, that's why we came before the board, to make sure we are trying to be in compliance with everything that the township is requiring. So as to the application. Where we are. The memo Mr. Morelli submitted to the board earlier in the week indicates that Mr. Chapaska has pled guilty to all of which, all of the fifteen municipal court summonses resulting in guilty findings or guilty plea. And that's not true. The original ones, before I got involved, there were some guilty pleas. At the present time, there are complaints that are on file and scheduled for a hearing later in the month. The Superior Court has, has rescheduled, they ordered to show cause at the township, pending the outcome of tonight's hearings. So that. Whatever results come from this evening or if everything is, is able to be worked out, then, then we're not even dealing with that. But beyond that, that's where we stand generally when we're dealing with the fence.
I'm sorry, I dropped it for a moment. He has made reference to my memo as dated June sixth. It was submitted to the board member two days ago. It's only a few pages. I'm assuming you had an opportunity to review it and it would be made part of the record. I did indication there that understanding what Mr. Chapaska had pled guilty to illegal. Confirm that. As far as any others, there may be others pending, but apparently whoever's been heard so far has either been guilty, paid or.
That's what was done originally before I got involved in it. And then when I got involved in it and we had our meeting, I believe in March, and met with the solicitor, township solicitor and with your zoning officer, the determination was made, is on the second phase of this, if, if Mr. Chapaska was going to be doing anything in terms of the in-home occupation that he needs to submit the zoning permit request. And that zoning permit was immediately made to the, to the zoning officer who immediately that day denied it. I'll get into my objections on where we stand in terms of evidence when it comes to that part of it. But that's, but as soon as the suggestion was made that I apply for a zoning permit for the in-home occupation and set forth the reasons for the, why we feel that we're in, we're the in-home. It was immediately denied.
But we're not, we're not dealing with that at this moment. We're dealing with the fence.
I understand. In terms of the fence application.
Is Mr. Chapaska gonna be speaking tonight?
Well, he wasn't.
Raise your hand. Raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give.
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Paul W. Chapaska, Jr., 415 Hancock, Williams County, Jersey, zero eight zero nine four.
Thank you.
The request that that was made in far as it goes is the variance for the eight-foot fence instead of the four-foot fence being in the front and on the sides of the property. How far.
Deer fence.
And ultimately, the property is being used for what purpose?
Farming, agricultural purposes.
And you are, is there any land, livestock eventually going to be on that property?
Yes.
And in front of the, on the various fences, you have a plastic windshield?
Yeah, it's a net windscreen to reduce the dust from blowing onto the other properties.
And why, why is there dust?
There's dust because we're cultivating the land. We're doing a lot of work to the land and the neighbors don't really kind of see eye to eye with the farming practices and I try to do the best I can to work with them. If we need to take the, the windscreen down, they're gonna complain more about the dust. There's no need to have the windscreen there. There's no complaint about the dust, but there has been numerous complaints about the dust, numerous complaints about a lot of other things. I've tried to inform them on the Right to Farm Act. I've tried to work with everybody. I do have neighbors here.
But you said you're not, you're not farming yet, you said. There's.
One of many different things of farming. So what we're.
I'm just quoting you.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a process. So we're gonna be putting in wildflowers. Wildflowers are out front, sunflowers. We're gonna be beekeeper, me and my sister are gonna be beekeepers.
So why didn't it eight-foot fence for flowers?
Keep the deer out.
Why eight feet?
Eight feet because the deer jump. They'll jump a four-foot fence.
So that's why you're asking for the eight feet. What, what negative impact is an eight-foot fence around your property gonna have on the neighbors?
Zero, sir. The deer, we've seen a reduced deer being struck by cars in that section. We see that the deer are now. I pay attention pretty much to the, the property and we have not had a dead deer in two hundred feet on either side of that property because it's diverted the deer toward the wetlands on the other side of Hancock.
You haven't seen deer jumping over that eight-foot fence?
No, sir.
And if the windshield, have you seen that blocking some of the dust that's been coming up from the floor?
Very helpful, very helpful to the licenseless when they're driving down the road. It helps reduce the dust.
Now you also, which we'll get to in the next segment of this, is you already have a forestry, what would you call it?
A woodlands management plan. So it's approved by pines. Everything we've got so far has been approved by pines. We have paperwork going on.
So you have, so the forest, as part of that, you've been taking.
That's correct, yeah.
And if I, if I saw you have mounds of dirt.
Compost.
That's piled up. What's happening with that?
Composting.
Is that going to be laid back down on your, on the farm?
Yeah, it gets laid down. We just laid a bunch yesterday.
Okay. And you said to me earlier today that you were gonna be doing some farming today, putting some seeds in.
And we've got a great amount in.
Like what?
Pumpkin, wood of, zucchini, corn, sweet corn.
I'm, I'm just, I'm focusing on the eight-foot high fence.
Deer acorns, sir.
I'm, I'm sure you're farming, but.
So deer acorns?
And, and Ed, the, the screening there, is that for wind or dust or is it for visual?
Comments, it's, it's for the dust that.
His comments, but as.
Generally.
You, you spec fences on site plans, I think. So why, why would you put that? I, I don't think it's for dust.
To keep visual and help.
Yeah.
So they advertise as a windscreen. That's how it's advertised. And you can look online right now on Amazon and you can read it and it'll be advertised as dust control and windscreen.
And if it doesn't, certainly if we're dealing with just the eight-foot fence and the board doesn't want the wind, windscreen, the windscreen could all come down. But I think he's honestly saying that if that windscreen comes down, that there's gonna be more problems with the neighbors, with the dust and everything else that's happening.
I mean, it's a residential neighborhood with an eight-foot high fence and it's very unsightly driving by there.
You drive by it though?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
But it's also, but also farming, but farming is allowed there. So besides it being residential, farming's allowed there. We've, for the next segment, we have write the farm documents for, for you.
But we're talking about the fence again, not.
But if the fence is part of, the reason for the fence is. How many acres?
Just under twelve.
Is, is all sealed in so that there is not a problem in terms of when he's farming that people who are upset at the moment are gonna be coming in saying that there's a problem, that they don't want to see the farming on that property, they don't want to see the livestock on the area, on the property, they don't want to see pumpkins growing on the area. It's a residential area and we shouldn't have farms here, which is, which is allowed to do and your township ordinance allows for farming.
But there's three separate lots there, right? Thirty-nine, thirty-eight and thirty-three.
They, prior to me getting involved, I understand that.
Houghman's.
Houghman Demusio was supposed to have consolidated those lots.
Who did?
Houghman Demusio's office consolidated those lots.
Bob Wilson.
And pre-lots or thirty-eight, thirty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-two?
All three. And just to clarify things, tell me, take the windscreen down? No problem. Every time it blows, the zip ties break off, less maintenance on mine.
Likewise, I would point out to you and, and will submit to you, I put into my. There were two electric gates on the front of Takahoe and in the back of the property. There was nothing in the ordinance that stops this property from having any electric gates. The electric gates are, are there. There's nothing in the ordinance that says it can't be there. They were put there so that, you indicated to me in the front, what happened with your, with your mom?
Yeah, so my mother-in-law is, has children, brings fiber fiber. Have you ever heard of that?
No. I'm, I'm sure that the electric gate is fine. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
There's no, there's, you're allowed to have electric gates?
It's eight-foot high.
Just, the, the issue here is, is the height of the fence.
Sure. It's an eight-foot high deer fence to keep the deer out. The, the windscreen stops when you get to the woods because the woods are under the woodlands management program. So there's no issue with dust in the woods. But. Windscreen will come down tomorrow morning.
Is that all approved, Rosemary? I thought I saw that it was.
So the.
Excuse me, she would have to be sworn before you. Rosemary has to be sworn before you.
Not this way, Rosemary, because we're gonna, maybe I'll be asking you questions.
Okay.
Raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do.
Name and address and, and your credentials here tonight, your position.
Rosemary Flaherty, zoning officer for Franklin Township, fifteen seventy-one Delcy Drive, Franklinville, New Jersey, zero eight three two two. The, the forestry stewardship program has a superintendent that goes out there for the South Jersey area. He went out there on May eighteenth and he found the site to be non-compliant. That was in my review that I sent to Mr. Schwartz.
I'm gonna object to any conversation dealing with the forestry program and any documentation that was sent to me at four o'clock today. I received from Ms. Flaherty documents dated June the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was a hundred and thirty-five pages of documents that were, that were given to me. I also received right immediately after that, another hundred plus pages from your township solicitor. So between four o'clock today and after that, I, I have looked over, over two hundred and fifty pages of documents. And it knows where these documents are, documents dealing with whether it's the forestry issue, whether it's, whether it's farming issue, whether it's the fence issue, whether it's the home occupation issue, everything else is being thrown in. What, what the board is, and I appreciate the fact you're trying to condense this because what is happening in this, everything is thrown into it like, we'll bring it all in here, see what, see what sticks against the wall and, and go from there. We're only dealing with the fact that the fence and the reason for the fence being that he's doing the farming, he's doing the forestry program. He just submitted some documents to you dealing with the forestry permit. Doing either being in compliance or every year he has to, at various times, he has to be meeting with the state forestry people as well as his own person who did the plan. And as I understand it, when they came out, when they said that there were, there was some time in the area that, that was, we were cutting too much of the wood down.
Yeah, so what did, what did Rosemary say? There was a letter of non-compliance, we call it, right?
Right. he has to be meeting with the state forestry people as well as his own person who did the plan. And as I understand it, when they came out, when they said that there was some time in the area that was, we were cutting too much of the wood down.
Yeah, so what did Rosemary say? There was a letter of noncompliance, we call it, right? So there was a, the letter of noncompliance just meant that, and it says it really clear in there, we just removed a little bit too much of woods. So under the, under the right to farm, you have to have five acres devoted either to crops under till or to woodlands management, so.
Well, you don't have, you already have 3.75 on one. Now it's consolidated, but.
It was consolidated before we got.
It wasn't before you submitted your paperwork to us?
Yes, it was.
Was it?
There are three separate lots and they have not been consolidated nor could they because they both, two of the lots have single-family dwellings on them.
We're writing every single letter of May 23rd, 2022, from the Department of Environmental Protection. So since we're talking about this letter, I think we should mark it.
We got it off the fence?
It was directed to the copy of the document. And that's the one indicates that the woodland property has been determined to be in noncompliance.
Again, that was a document that was just provided to me at four o'clock today. So as much as the board has a whole bunch of documents that they're trying to look at, likewise, I can't properly represent my client if the zoning officer is going to present to me and your township solicitor, who is not even involved in this matter, is presenting to me at four o'clock today for a hearing this evening, documents expecting me to look through it all, including photographs, including a video that they intend to show later on, including other things that they intend to present to this board.
Maybe way beyond the fence.
Yeah, I'd like to stay back from the fence too, but.
When they raised the woodland issue, the woodland letter, the search for knowledge, it was copied to him, May 23rd, so it's not something we're stringing.
That letter.
You just got to read all of it.
There's more on it though. You're reading half the paper.
Chairman.
The only purpose that the woodland is being brought up is to present to this board the fact that there is farming and forestry that's been approved on this property. I submitted to you earlier documentation.
So the reason for the fence is to stop the deer from running out onto Tuckahoe Road?
No. The reason for the fence is to stop the deer from running in the property.
Eating your crops.
Correct.
The wood chips and all that too.
No wood chips, our compost.
Have an answer.
And I would present to you, number one.
You've got to mark the letter, this B1, that we're discussing at the May 23rd letter, from the New Jersey Department regarding the noncompliance.
Destination of the fence?
No. I don't know why you would, I'll just say for the record, I don't understand why you would need the eight-foot fence. I understand to keep deer out, but is this, this is still residential property? Is Pinelands residential rural, correct?
Farming's approved.
No, I understand. I'm not discussing if farming's approved or not. I'm not discussing that. But the eight-foot fence on the front, I mean, is it to the rear of the property? You can have up to four foot, right, for residential?
Up to the rear of the.
Up to the rear of the structure.
So to get the variance for an eight-foot fence in front, I don't see the purpose of that. I understand what you're saying with deer jumping in, but it doesn't look like a farm from the documents that I reviewed at this point.
Yeah. One we offered to you. Is the gate, I know I'm not so much concerned about it, but this is the front gate and we're submitting that document, that photograph to you.
We'll make that A1.
Thank you. It was requested by the zoning officer for everybody.
Yeah.
They also have exhibit two, which is A2.
We're going to open up to the public if you'll have a chance. They're wrong. You can't hear us?
No.
We are using them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rear gate for the property.
Why are you showing this?
Well, because when I first met with the township solicitor and your zoning officer, it was indicated that there was a problem with the electric gates. We weren't allowed to have the electric gates because it's residential property and we had to be applying for variances. It was presented to us that we have to apply for it. We're presenting to you and putting it on the record so that someone later on doesn't come in and say.
I don't think you need anything for the electric gate, just can't be eight feet. It could be a four-foot electric gate.
Those are, the photos you're looking at shows the gates that presently exist there. Exhibit three. Is showing the front fence. Showing the way the fence presently looks in front of the property on Tuckahoe Road. Should that's A3? Exhibit four, additional photograph of the front fence along Tuckahoe Road.
As they grow in.
You have A4 in front of it. Explain A4.
So A4 indicates Bradford pear trees and pere middle arborvitaries. So in a few years, you won't even see the fence. Few years, that's it.
You're already planting arborvitaries and they're going to be growing, blocking that fence in that area in front of it.
Yes, sir. Along with the wildflowers you mentioned, you drive by, you didn't like.
I didn't say that. You said that you had wildflowers and I said that you need a fence for the wildflowers.
No, I was just, nothing against you, you just, you said earlier that you drive up and down the road all the time and you don't like the way it looks.
I said it's unsightly, is what I said.
Yeah.
But you better quote me, quote me properly.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Exhibit five, which is A5, is also photographs of the front fence.
And so just put a lot of time and hard work into this. And I'll tell you that your property looks unsightly, that's all. Just, you know, one comment says and the next.
Darren, you said it because you're here before the board.
The reason I said what?
I said the reason we said, I said it, it's because you're here before the board.
A6. Explain it to the board as well.
So A6 just indicates the standard callings for deer fence, when you buy deer fence. It shows that the lower portion of the fence has different spacing. It's smaller spacing, the higher you go.
Windscreen, right?
Yeah, higher spacing. And the green netting, it just shows the windscreen. Windscreen is when you. Description of it is windscreen.
And that's A6. That's what the screen looks like if you're up close.
Yep. Looks green, blends in with the natural landscape.
A7 is the right side of the property, showing the fence with the windshield and Mr. Pascoe's property in front of it. Then there's the windshield there. What does that windshield do?
It's just slowing the dust down so it doesn't go into Mr. and Mrs. Charlotte's property. Again, I think we may have a clear, take the.
Did we get a permit to put the fence up?
Fence up. Did you contact anybody about the fence? Can I ask for the record, since we're keeping it on the record, that you instruct anybody that is in the audience to keep the comments to themselves so whatever's going on the record with the court and for this board and it's kept on the record and you conduct it properly? I know you want to.
I haven't heard anyone. There's something I don't hear. So, yeah. They're all going to have a chance to speak, so please, no comments until it's time for the public to speak.
Thank you, Tom. I was unaware that we needed a permit.
When did you put the fence up?
Year and a half, two years ago. It was prior to Rosemary working for the town. There was no active zoning officer at the time, you might be aware of that. There was a period of time when the township didn't have a zoning officer.
Is another exhibit, which is also showing, what side of the property is this?
This is the front section, front right side of 4050 Tuckahoe Road.
What, I know you're showing us multiple pictures of the fence. What, you know, where are we going with this?
We're going for you to see exactly what the fence looks like and what the property looks like in front of it on Mr. Pascoe's property.
I think we have a handle of that one that by now.
Well, I only have one more, which is the side, is that on the same side or the different side? A9.
This will be along the right side. This borders.
Can you tell us what impact, negative impact those eight-foot fence is having on your neighbors?
Zero, other than they don't like it. Some don't mind, some, you know, all for what we're doing and some don't.
Were there other pictures that you took that you feel needs to be brought in front of the board? Dealing with the fence?
Um, no, no, I think we're clear on the fence.
Okay.
I think I just, we have some pictures of, so like every day is an ongoing project when we get time. So we've just done, recently we've just done a bunch of improvements to the property, you know, practicing agricultural and things like that. Stuff, just to kind of indicate to you guys that it's, you know, it's not like just this big dust bowl with, you know, piles of compost and things like that. It's a work in progress. That's why when you want to basically get farm assessed, there's a two-year denial and you're approved in the third year as long as you meet your criteria. You got three years to, you know, get the property actively devoted to farming, to, you know, meet your criteria and fall in under the assessment. So it takes a bit of time. It just doesn't happen overnight.
And at some point you intend to have livestock on the property?
That's correct, but we just got, yeah, we just got to hold off on, you know, livestock. Isn't just the only, you know, type of farm there is. There's beef farms, there's wildflower farms. So just because there's no livestock doesn't mean that it's not a farm. When the Right to Farm pamphlet, if you haven't had it, it'll indicate to users guide of the different type of farms. They come in all different shapes and sizes. Just, I know we all write books when we're younger about the, you know, the stump in the barn or PU, the farmer, and doesn't necessarily consist of livestock.
But what they may report out to the board also. See one, the fence is eight-foot in height, has only permitted on properties where livestock is kept. So to put livestock in a later date, you'd have to come back before this, you'd be able to put an eight-foot fence in, but you'd have to take down the four-foot fence and the board denies you tonight and put an eight-foot fence in.
So if we need livestock there, my sister has to, you know, get rid of a bunch of goats. She has a farm across town. We'll bring some goats in. If, you know, it wasn't, you know, we weren't ready for that just yet, but I'm sure I can call the Yamiche up and get a, you know, a small wind tube and have it dropped on the weekend and we'll get our goats in there. Again, I think it's a process. I think kind of, you know, when you're doing the farm, if you're putting your crops in and you have.
There's a lot of things going on out there that you're mentioning.
Yeah.
How could you possibly be doing all these kinds of things? You have, we're on the fence right now. So let's stay to the fence. In fact, I think we should open up to the public now. Is there a motion to?
I make a.
Second by Jim, I mean Andy Hamel. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Any abstentions? Any information from the public like to be heard regarding the fence?
Should we instruct the public to keep comments on the fence at this time?
Yeah, it's our sense. It's about the fence. Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testment you're going to get.
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
Yeah, my name is Carl Millie. I live at 4014 Tuckahoe Road. I am adjoining to his property off of Tuckahoe. Excuse me? M.I.L.L.E.Y. Sure, welcome, honey.
What lot are you? Do you know your lot?
Uh, no, I don't offhand.
Okay, your lot, then you are lot 37.
That sounds great. I don't want to.
Look at the property here to the right.
Excuse me?
Look at the property here to the right.
On Tuckahoe Road, I'm on the right.
Okay, that's yours.
Okay, so now my property adjoins his property.
Right.
So this statement here, him and his lawyer, this is a joke. This dust shield, not only is it an eyesore on Tuckahoe Road, it's an absolute eyesore. The dust shield down the side of the house only goes from Tuckahoe Road to the back of Stephen Kelly's property. From there all the way to the back of his house, there is no dust shield. So every day when he runs his trucks in and out, in and out, the dust is flying over because it's a fence that's got six-by-six holes in it. It comes into Kelly and Steve's property and into my property because they fly up and down there, bring the trucks in there. The area is zoned residential. He's operating a commercial business in a residential area. That's number one. Number two, far as this joke with the deer, with the fence up, there's a path that goes between the properties from Red Avenue to Birch. Since he put the fence up and cut it off, now all the deer are in my backyard. They eat all my flowers. So I'm glad that they don't eat his wild. Can't get down the path. Now, the next thing I have a problem with, the eight-foot fence was put up illegally. Never contacted any of our neighbors, never said anything to us to go put a fence. He did it on his own. So I go try to talk to them, there's telephone poles from Tuckahoe Road all the way to Hancock that are strictly straight in the lobby. The left side's your property, the right side's my property. He puts the fence up, the fence is a foot and a half on my property and I want it removed. So the eight-foot fence is an eyesore. The back of the property where he's talking about this dumb gate that's electric, there was a four-by-four concrete hub from my survey company when I bought the property that was two feet deep. He has a bobcat. He just dug it up and he threw it behind Pat and Pat's house. I found it. There was a concrete hub there for the separation of the properties. Now his gate is on a foot and a half on my property and I want it removed.
And the fence is on your property as well?
And the fence is on my property also. And there's no dust shield there. All that dust is blowing in our yard. So I don't know what he's talking about, that he's helping the neighbor putting the dust. The one on Tuckahoe Road, all that is is an eyesore. So, I don't know what he's talking about, that he's helping the neighbor putting the dust. The little Tucker Road, all that is is an eyesore. Absolute eyesore. And this thing he's got going with the trucks in and out, the gates, and he told me, he called me and said he's in compliance with. He gave me a page notebook. Carl, look this up, look. So, I looked it up. I looked it up. You go right all the way to the bottom of the page and it says right on there, in ordinance with your local township. So, you're telling me you're applying by all these rules, but wait on the bottom, it says in coordination with your local township. And there's nothing in coordination, nothing at all. So, this fence is illegal, it's on my property, and the fence in the front is an absolute eyesore. And the trucks going back and forth and cutting chainsaw, he's supposed to be cutting only one quarter wood. What a joke. There's gotta be 30, 40 cords. The mulch is 25 feet high. To me, it's a fire hazard, but that's just one opinion. So, he ain't doing nothing to help us, saying that, you know, I talked about, you didn't talk to, he called me to try to buy two of my acres because as you just said, he can't meet that compliance of five acres for the agriculture. So, he wanted to buy two acres off of me, which obviously that would never happen. So, he don't even meet that compliance. So, I just think it's funny when you read that agricultural paper and on the bottom, it says right on there, in compliance with your local township. Now, I did call Rosemary. I said, Rosemary, as far as I know, the state law states when you have a fence going up, it's supposed to. Is that true? She said yes. Well, he has it on my property and I want it gone. So, either he can remove it or I'll remove it myself. So, but this is, this is an absolute joke. I don't know what they're talking about, but this is a joke.
Well, thank you, honey. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to be heard?
Can I, I have to ask a couple of questions?
Sure. To the homeowner?
Yes. Coffee, you step up here.
Yeah, sure.
Can you show me the survey that shows that, that my client's fence is on your property?
Should be your survey that your property, your fence is on that property. I bought the house 20 years ago. Let me see your survey.
You have to speak into the microphone and speak to us.
Okay, and we have that one at the time. I've got three of them on right now.
Okay. Could you please ask this gentleman if he has a copy of the survey and he says it's showing that my client's fence is on his property?
Well, I do when I bought the house in 2000. I didn't bring it here tonight. I didn't bring it with me because the, the property line is pretty clear. I mean, it's, the telephone poles are right on. It does show right on the county properties. I have to bring my paper. I would like to see his paper where it's okay to put it on my property.
If he always had the survey again.
If he put it up without having permits, then where would the survey be from your, for your client?
Exactly. There you go.
We're asking for his survey. He says, showing his objection.
He didn't put the fence up.
He didn't put the fence up.
I understand he did, but he's saying that on his property, that this, the fence is on his property. He's saying he has a survey that shows that. He got notice of this meeting this evening for the fence and now he's coming in here saying, well, I didn't think I needed to bring it.
I didn't get no notice. My neighbor told me.
Well, maybe you're not within two feet, but, but you actually had noticed it, which I saw you, so I assume you got the copy of the petition that was sent out to everybody.
No, I didn't say. I talked to my neighbors.
So, you have no idea why you were coming here?
No, listen, I know why I'm coming here. So, you tell me why you put a fence up illegally on my property that you're representing. Tell them. Yeah, yeah, once you keep.
Anyone, please?
Maybe he wants to get in again.
Please sit down now. Anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward.
My suggestion is that we're gonna have hostile people testifying that this, this meeting, a hearing should be stopped and we should have a police officer brought in.
On his way.
Hi, my name's Kelly Charloane. I live right next to the nuisance.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
Williams Town, New Jersey, 08094.
And where do you live?
C-H-I-A-R-L-O-N-E. I live right next door. Carl is behind me. They, their property joins back in the woods. Mine is right next door, the whole, right next door. So, when asked, did he get permission to put the fence up? I'm gonna try to stick with the fence. He said, well, there was no zoning officer. It was before road. Well, there was. I'm gonna mess up his last name. Matthew DeSasari. Okay, he was the zoning officer at the time. Because I have a letter that I wrote to him saying he was putting post back in September 15th of 2020. He was putting post up in the front of his property to get ready to put a big fence up. At the time, he was cutting down the woods. He bought the 1.7 acres, that little strip of land between me and what used to make my property private with. Pull that property out. I was also complaining about that. So, about this fence, first of all, he never got permission to put one up. He never had permission to clear the land. The other day, that's the only time I can get maybe a little bit of lease in place at 6:30 in the morning before he starts his machines up. He has logs that go past, the reason why there's no dead deer on the road is because he took out all the trees. That's why. There's logs, there's mulch, there's dirt, there's machinery. A giant monster moved in next door and six years ago. And it's monster trucks, it's monster machinery, it's monster logs, it's monster of the land, everything.
But the fence?
Yeah.
We're on the fence.
And then the fence is a monster fence. It's eight foot high, you know, so.
So, you're opposed to fence?
I'm opposed to fence, yes. Yes, I just need to, it's been a long time coming. All right, thank you for your.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Come forward, please. Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Mary Ann Vasly, 4047 Hancock Avenue, Williams Town, New Jersey, 08094. L.I.E.F.F. My property adjoins Paul's property on the one side. The fence runs down my property and across the back of my property. To be honest with you, I have no problems with it. We do have a deer problem. I have deer come in my yard every night, eat my flowers. I have bought deer netting that is like seven, seven to eight foot high and put it around my flower beds. I wish Paul would have run the fence down the other side of my property. Would have made me happy. Paul has been nothing but a good neighbor to me. He has, as far as I'm concerned, he's improved the property from what it was. He also took down several trees that were maybe 10 feet from my house that were on his property that if they'd have come down in a storm, would have taken my house out. So, I don't have a problem with the fence. I don't have a problem with him running his business. My question is, why does this township have a problem with businesses? You know, when Fazio's wanting to build a business, and I know this is off subject.
We're on the fence, not on Fazio or a business.
But, you know, we have high taxes. The only, one of the ways we'll get the taxes down is to have businesses in this township. The township doesn't seem to be.
Not a farm assessed business.
We still all pay taxes. We still all pay taxes. And as far as the eight-foot deer fence, go down to dust fields, you go around the blueberry fields, any, any farm that has any kind of agriculture or whatever has eight-foot fence.
But you do realize it's residential.
Then why is, why did Myers had a pool place up there for years? That was not, that was a business?
I, you know, I don't know about Myers.
Oh, you go back that far? Well, there's the cemetery, they sell cemetery headstones there in that property.
Maybe they got a variance. You know, we don't, we don't know.
They were there probably before most of you people were even around. Okay.
So, you're happy with the fence?
I am happy with the fence. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Sarah Miller, 465 Sunny Hill Avenue, Franklinville. Committee, is the fence illegal? Eight-foot fence illegal in this township? Are we sticking to the fence?
Yeah, we're sticking to the fence.
Is the fence illegal?
It's not currently permitted.
It's not illegal. I mean, it can get, it's not permitted, you can get a variance.
If you apply for one.
Okay, so generally residents have to apply for a permit, correct?
Yeah.
Was a permit applied for?
You heard the testimony.
Okay, so the fence is illegal, so the fence should come down, correct?
I can't answer that question.
Okay, well, it's an eyesore and it's in a residential and it's bringing down property values in our township. And we have things set up, we have things set up for a reason in the township, right? We all have to abide by township ordinances and we have to apply for permits for a reason. So, when we have people come in or folks do things that they're not supposed to do, it's up to the committee to uphold those things for the rest of the residents in the town. Because if I need something on my property such as a shed or whatever, I have to come in and apply for a permit and do things appropriately so I am within the law of the township.
That's why we're here tonight hearing this, so.
Okay, good enough?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do.
Name, please, and address.
Patrick Schout, S.C.H.U.D. two, D two, 3994 Tucker Road.
Try to speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
The windshield that he speaks about, I was born and raised in South Philly and if I ran down Pajon Cavanaugh, the only reason that green windshield's put up is for privacy. Nothing to do with wind, okay? And if it's a farm, okay, I have no problem with them building a farm, but that case, why any other, any other farmer that's trying to get some started got eight-foot fences around it? You put, you put fences around the crops that you gotta worry about protecting. You don't put it around the whole property. As far as the trees growing in the front, it's gonna take more than two years to cover that fence up and it still will never cover that fence up, okay? And the wood that's piled in the back, the farm is, as far as I'm concerned, is a forest. The wood is piled up 25, 20, 25, maybe 30 foot high, cut in firewood. He's even got a shirt on, firewood, okay, for a firewood company. He's selling stuff, he's selling mulch. The farm, that's a big joke, okay? But the fence, it is an eyesore as everybody else has said, okay? But it's not there for wind. I don't care what you say. It's got all those trucks there, which used to be in the back where his house is. So, what he did was move the property up on Tucker so he didn't have agnoys and dust around his house. So, he moved it up on Tucker to make everybody else's life miserable.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come forward. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give.
I do.
Your name and address.
Virginia Malazo, M.I.L.A.Z.Z.O., 53 Wolford Avenue, Franklinville, New Jersey, 08322. I don't see any problem with the fence. I don't live right. I, I don't live right next to him. I pass by regularly. They say it's an eyesore. Okay, fine. I don't know, if the eyesore is up their property, then they should have made a move to buy the property next door to stop an eyesore. People drive by at 50 miles an hour down Tucker Road, so I really don't see it as an eyesore and you should allow people time to get their enterprises started. He planted the plants in front. He can't make them grow any faster. And that's just what I have to say. I just think the Charloans are neighbors who are mad because property changed next to them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Danielle Jackson.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
Yes.
Your name and address.
Danielle Jackson, 4071 Hancock Avenue, Williams Town, New Jersey. I really honestly, coming here, I didn't have a clue as to what was going on. I just got the notification from my neighbors and everything. And the only thing I did know is I did know that that horrible property looks horrible because I do drive by it almost every day. The problem I'm having here, just listening to everything, is he's claiming to be. Clear land demolishing and clearing. He claims to be a farm, but he's, his company's name is Sea Clear Land Demolition and clearing, clearing. It's Sea Clear Land Clearing, something to that effect. He has an ad in the front of the property. Sea Clear Land Clearing is how it is. I know, but I'm saying, if he's advertising as Sea Clear Land Clearing, why, he's not a farm. So, why would he need an eight-foot fence to keep the animals out of the farm that does not exist? There's not a farm there. He's saying it takes time to set up a farm and everything. Well, okay, well, you set up the farm, then you can put your fence up. But as of right now, it just looks like a giant construction site. There's nothing but dirt there. There is nothing but dirt. There's no animals, there's no, no crops, nothing. So, I don't understand how Sea Clear Land Clearing is a farm. It tells you, he tells you what he is and that's all he's done is cleared land and dumped it there. Whenever he clears elsewhere, he brings and dumps there, because I've heard the trucks coming and going constantly.
But you object to the fence?
I object to the fence, absolutely, because it doesn't make sense why he's claiming he needs it. He needs it for a farm that does not exist.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask also, you asked her where, what personal knowledge she has, there's no farm on that property?
You can ask her, yes, sure.
My property backs up to the one right next to it, the one that backs up to it.
What personal knowledge you have, there's not a farm there?
Visually, I see it. I walk in the back of my property and I can look right into his property and see nothing but dirt.
Do you personally, that he doesn't have a farm?
I can visually see there's no farm. Like whether it's flower flowers or animals or whatever he's claiming the farm is, there is no farm. I know what a farm looks like. It is strictly dirt.
She answered your question.
There's the answer.
No, the answer to the question is, do you know what he is doing on the property?
Yes, he advertises Sea Clear Land Clearing.
He's doing farming?
No, there is no farming. There's trucks with dirt. That is it.
You go on his property.
I can stand at my property and look at his property. He can provoke the only one. Fence does not protect from deer getting into a farm when there is no farm.
Thank you. Let me objection, object again, because now we're getting into the farm issue.
Yeah, we don't want to get into the farm.
We're dealing with the farm, with the fence, excuse me.
We're not getting into the farm issue. Then you want to say?
Yeah, I'm a neighbor. My name's Fritz.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give? Your name and address?
4095 Tucker Road. I'm right across the street.
Your name and address?
Fritz Walter, 4095 Tucker Road, directly across the street. I don't have a problem with the fence. I had a tree fall on a pool in backyard. Came and helped me to clean it up. He's been good to me. I don't have a problem with nothing.
All right, thank you.
The fence, I don't think the fence is an issue.
Someone's coming. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
Yes.
Name and address.
Lynn Gonzalez, 4069 Tucker Road, directly across the street. Do not have a problem with the fence. I see it every day. I can look out my house and that's what I see. I. And on, and his property. It is none of my business. That's one. Two, if he is planning on having a farm and he has that fence there, that's wonderful because then his animals are not coming out. I don't have a problem with the fence. I see it every day, all day long. Does not bother me. He has trees in front of it that eventually grow. I have trees in front of my house. What is happening behind his fence and in his house is nobody's business but his. I don't care.
Okay, thank you. Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
Yes.
Your name and address.
My name is Carol Malazo. I live at 53 Wolford Avenue, Franklinville, New Jersey, 08322. Mr. Chapasco's fence is for G.G. Farms. What these, that lady was referencing is Mr. Chapasco's tree service. There are arborists at the tree service. We're not in a tree clearing business. If it's dangerous or the customer wants it down for whatever reason, and many times. reason, and many times, Mr. Chapasko would show up and say, hey, look the environment. This thing, this thing, you won't know where it was timed to make the farm what it's supposed to be. That area that they're talking about with the fence, will be G.G. Farms, and that'll have the local shrubbery, some animals, hopefully goats, some chicken, hopefully, and most of the plants that grow normally in South Jersey. We do need time. Mr. Chapasko, other entity, is a tree service. We do not clear, we're not a tree-clearing service. In fact, many of the things that we do are to save the trees. So this particular area, yes, it was cleared enough to do the farming, and the fence, which I'll get back to, the fence is, and I hate to say it, but we all know how the deers are, so that's what the fence is for, for G.G. Farms. G.G. Farms is a separate entity than Sea Clear Tree and Property Services. That's what the business is, but it's not there. What the fence is for the farm, for G.G. Farms, we're hoping for other things to grow in there, perhaps even some ginseng, other things that would grow in the woods. So the fence is for the farm, G.G. Farms. Mr. Chapasko's other entity is not to do with the fence. That's all I say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
Yes, I do. Four one four six Hancock Avenue, Williamstown. Okay, back to the fence. I had a fence put up twenty-eight years ago. I had to get a permit, I had to pay for all these permits, so fine if he wants a fence. Township needs to make money, so he needs to pay his permits too. That's all I have to say on the fence.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do.
Your name and address.
Steven Charloon, four zero three four Tuckahoe Road, Williamstown, New Jersey, zero eight zero nine four. Where the front of his house, with the trees that he brought up, have been changed like nine times or so. I mean, sometimes there's boulders there, it changes, and I guess now it's changed for good. But with reference to his mulch, or his, I forget the term that he used, but he brings wood chips from other sites, dumps it, and then scrapes the topsoil.
We're talking about the fence right now.
Well, I'm getting to, because he has thirty-foot-high piles of dirt, that low dirt. We can't open our windows at daytime or nighttime, because of the dust that blows from the mulch piles that he has with dirt, compost piles, that's what he calls it. So as far as it being a dust barrier, I don't see it much being, and as far as the windscreen going down, he hasn't put that up, he just started putting up down our side of the fence just last week, where up until now, for the last two years, it's been bare, so there's been nothing keeping any dirt out. As far as the fence for farming, he runs ATVs, dirt bikes and everything around there, there's no way anything could grow back there, besides all his heavy equipment that he drives up and down there. So I don't see how it could be a farm. And yes, I am opposed to fence.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please, you swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do.
Name and address.
Steven Reynus, thirty-four Avery Drive, Williamstown, New Jersey, oh eight oh nine four. R.A.I., N is in Nancy. So I installed the deer fence, I guess, two winters ago. Mr. Chapasko came out.
Speak into the microphone, please.
He came out, told me the deer fence looked great, it looked way better than they expected. They were happy with it, to my knowledge. Now, it's all I keep hearing about is this green windscreen, dust stopper, whatever it is. If that's gotta come down, it can come down, it's a dust stopper. He said it's an eyesore, she said it's an eyesore. If that's the case, we'll take it down, leave the deer fence up. We're gonna take down an eight-foot deer fence if you say, put up a four-foot fence, get our farming established, and then put up another eight-foot fence. Doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public portion.
I make them.
You're not part of the public portion. Raise your right hand, please, swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give.
Yes.
Name and address.
Alissa Lehman, forty sixty-six Tuckahoe Road, in Williamstown, New Jersey, zero eight zero nine four. I, to preface this, I grew up on a farm, and I'm helping my brother get the farm set up, so the farm land does take a while to get in process. The fence up beforehand is very helpful, because when you are trying to put animals and agriculture there, and if you're trying to get established, and there are deer jumping in there, or other ways for animals to escape, you have problems, so the fence is there now, which is great, because like Steve had said, if we're having an eight-foot fence, take it down, put a four-fence up, put animals in there, then have to put an eight-foot fence up again, that leaves room for the deer to come in if we're growing crops, or gives room for the animals to escape. So, and I'm not against the fence.
Thank you. Mr. Chapasko, please. All right, his motion to...
I make a motion, we close the public portion.
Closed by Danny Bessary.
Second.
Second, Jim Gettrum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Board, do you have some closing comments here?
Yes. I think that the complaints that are really, as I just heard, are not dealing with the fence. The complaints are dealing with the fact that all of a sudden this property was turned into a farm, that there is dust blowing onto their property, that it was put up illegally, which is the reason we're here, because the zoning officer said we need to come to the board, we need to get permits. Again, when I got involved and sat with the township solicitor, the zoning officer, and we sat and said, what do we need? The thing that was asked for was that we come into it, there were two choices. One was to take down that fence, put up the four-foot fence, I think it was, we reduced the farming area directly in front of the house, that's on Tuckahoe Road. Or the alternative would be to come before this board and ask for this board to allow the eight-foot fence that was put up, which, again, as a requirement, if this board approves the eight-foot fence, certainly we're gonna go to the zoning officer. The zoning officer's gonna say, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars for the zoning permit to allow for that fence to remain up there, and Mr. Chapasko's gonna pay the zoning permit that's required for that fence. The fact that he may have made a mistake before and didn't do that, doesn't kill him to the point that he can no longer do it, if there's a purpose for having that fence there. And as you heard, what's gonna end up happening is, he takes down this fence, he has a choice. He can leave, he can leave no fence around this property, people are gonna be complaining at that point in time that everything he's doing there is even worse than it looks right now. Or we push another four livestock up there, on the property, then he comes back and he goes to the zoning officer, doesn't have to come back to anybody else, he goes to the zoning officer, he proves that he's got livestock on the property, he gets a zoning permit under the ordinance that allows for the eight-foot fence. He's allowed, he's allowed to do the farming, your township ordinance allows, in the P.R.R. zone, allows for farming in any of its branches, except that slaughterhouses, piggeries, and like obnoxious businesses are simply prohibited. So the town, this property, they wanna complain about farming, which is not the issue we're dealing with here, but the farming is there, that farming is allowed, he's trying desperately to make sure that he's residents across the street, that he's buffering it. They don't see what's happening behind there. He's working towards reducing the dust that's on the property, he's trying to keep everybody happy. They don't like it because they now have a windscreen, and they've got a fence up there. They don't like the windscreen, the board has no problem with a windscreen being up. The board feels that the fence can stay up, but the windscreen doesn't serve any purpose, that it looks horrible, doesn't need to be there. Take it down. I got a feeling that by doing that, there's gonna be more complaints coming from residents than it exists right now. But positive criteria, you've heard testimony, that they don't have any problem with it. There are people that say that it's serving a purpose, it's gonna be blocking any livestock from running in and out of this property. Negative criteria, people are objecting, but the objection is saying the fence is horrible to look at. They're saying that when they look at it, it's an eyesore. I don't know where the fence, it's fenced in and of itself is an eyesore, if he takes down the eight-foot fence as opposed to the four-foot fence, nobody is saying that an eight-foot fence is an eyesore as opposed to a four-foot fence. We put up a four-foot fence, we're still dealing with a four-foot fence. And they're gonna come back in to the zoning officer and say, this four-foot fence is an eyesore. It's gonna be, I assume it's gonna be the same type of fence. So it's only a matter of reducing it by four feet, and he's trying to make it so it's gonna, it's gonna prevent the deer from thing that's needed at that point. People have an objection to the farm, they can complain to the proper authorities about the farm. I know it's difficult within the state, where you've got residents, one area in farm in the other area, but the township, like in your ordinance, indicates that Franklin Township promotes farming. So he's trying, he's trying to do the right thing with regard to the farm, and he's only saying, let me have the eight-foot fence, because it's serving a purpose. And I think that we presented to you the positive and negative criteria for why the eight-foot fence should remain, again, as indicated, the height, doesn't really make a difference except for the height, but other than that, I don't, I don't see there a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Who's thinking the comment? Who?
And Steve, and she.
Who?
I'll go ahead and write some summarization. So for this particular application, we're not talking about the farm, we're not talking about the variance that's required is in the P.R.R. district, a fence in a front yard is permitted to have a maximum height of four feet, and a rear yard can have a height up to six feet. Agriculture is permitted here, fences are allowed to be eight feet in height if there is livestock on the property. There are additional requirements for livestock on the property, and additional requirements for where that fence can be if you have livestock on the property. I can go up front. I'll try and slow down, but I'm a fast, I'm a fast person. Not, not fast at running, but fast at talking. I was with CME, so it's the zoning board planner. And so the relief that's required tonight is the eight-foot fence in the front yard has been mentioned many times. Four feet is permitted in the front, six feet in the back, eight feet is permitted if you have livestock on the property as part of approved farm operation. And an eight-foot fence for livestock is also required to be set back fifteen feet from the property line. I have not seen a survey or a site plan showing exactly the boundaries of this fence. The issue was raised before, whether or not the fence is even entirely on his property, I can't speak to that, but it does seem to me, in the pictures I've seen, that the fence is probably not fifteen feet back from the property line, so if that is the case, that the board were to permit the eight-foot-high fence, an additional variance for not being fifteen feet back, sometime in the near future, there is livestock, and an eight-foot fence would actually be permitted. There is also sections of the township code that specifically say where the pasture for livestock is supposed to be on the property relative to other buildings on the property. We haven't seen any information on how or where the livestock are gonna be pastured at this point. For any bulk variance, and this is just a bulk variance at this point for the fence, there's two things they have to meet, the positive criteria and the negative criteria. The positive criteria, there has to be a showing demonstrated by the applicant, the burden of proof is on the applicant for any variance, it needs to be a showing that either there is a practical hardship in conforming to the ordinance, meaning that he'd have to show that there is a hardship in having a four-foot fence in the front yard. If there's, in the absence of a practical hardship, the board's allowed to grant a variance under what's known as the flexible criteria, so C variance, C one is hardship, C two is flex criteria. And, I'm sorry, for C two, he needs to show that what he's proposing is a preferable zoning alternative over a four-foot fence, so he needs to show that, one, it's advancing one of the purposes of the land use law, and two, that what he's proposing is actually a better alternative than four feet, so it'd be better to have eight feet rather than four feet for the fence. Need to show that there is no substantial detriment to the general welfare of the community, basically meaning that it's not gonna have a significant negative impact on the quality of life for the surrounding neighbors. And the second part of this is that he needs to show that there's not a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, which means you're not straying so far from the intent of the zoning ordinance, so that the zoning board is usurping the authority of the governing body and determining what the laws are for the town. In this case, in my opinion at least, the intent of the ordinance in requiring a four-foot fence at max in the front is because even though there is, agriculture is permitted here by right, this is also a residential neighborhood and a residential district, and the intent of limiting the height of a fence in the front yard to four feet is to keep, make sure aesthetically we're in keeping with a residential area. So it seems to me the intent of the ordinance to allow agriculture here, as well as even large fences to surround agricultural fields and livestock pastures, is that the general frontage of property is supposed to maintain a residential character. Appropriate for farming and livestock. So that's really summarization of what our comments are in our letter, and the burden of proof that's required of the applicant tonight before you'll be able to vote on this application. Yeah, I think that really summarizes our letter in terms of the fence.
Thank you, Chris.
Just to add to what Chris had said, a four-foot fence in the front yard actually has to be fifty percent see-through as well. And, you know, if the whole, you know, gist of this is that if they have to bring it down to four feet, they would like to keep this fence there, this is a solid-looking fence, it would have to be fifty percent see-through. The agriculture use, when you change home agriculture and you have a use that's brand-new, and it's a change of use, it requires an agriculture buffer. That agriculture buffer should be spelled out in the code, and I'm sure it is, of what you have to actually have there, which is usually trees and things. That's it.
But the, if it is agriculture, he has to be eight feet off the property line? For an eight-foot, fifteen, for an eight-foot-high fence? All right, Mike, you have any comments?
Just that the preference to livestock, I think, is misplaced. I mean, if you're going to have livestock, before you put your fence up, you come in with a plant, if you come in with a plant through the zoning office, then you'll need a new company. Driz for the houses, what type of livestock determines where and how the fence is, and maybe the fence up there on that. You want to leave it from that to come here while the next one is going to enter.
Right. Mr. Schwartz, any more comments?
What I'm claiming for my client is that when he's gone to the county and he's dealt with the form bureau in terms of the fencing, he's been told that on the fencing that he's put. You're indicating that it's 30 foot off of where? 30 feet off their road frontage. 30 on the 40, on three quarters of Trump, there's a 300-foot stretch. 200 feet is 30 feet off of the road frontage. The other 100 feet is 45 feet off. A couple doors down is the cemetery place now. They sell gravestones. Their fence, I measured it, it's only 25 feet off. Six-foot aluminum fence, and then there's an eight-foot chain link down the side. Now, I recently did some work for my tree business for the neighbor that that bought up to, who built his pine trees for him. That eight-foot fence is directly on the property line.
But we heard the testimony, what you have to have here in Franklin Township. That might have been grandfathered in, we don't know. We can't go look at other people's properties.
Well, I think that's what we're here. We've done just about everything we've had to do. It shouldn't be the resident's fault that during COVID, Franklin Township didn't have a licensed zoning officer. They had a detective acting as a zoning officer. So we're going trying to work with the zoning officer, and he's basically not helping us out because he's not licensed to do so. So, I mean, that's got to get taken into play here. I feel as if Rosemary was involved. COVID put a big negative impact on everybody, and it definitely hit this town. It took the zoning officer out of, you know, out of practice. And none of this would happen here today. If Rosemary had been involved on the get-go, things would be very clear. Len would have been involved way farther on. And I don't even think we've been here today with the attorney alibi. The neighbors.
All right, but we are here, Mr. Chapasco, so let's move on.
I hear you, Bob. We've done everything that we possibly could to try. They conflict with the state law. The state law is the state law. And if you read the pamphlet, I took time out of my day today to make sure I got 16 of these printed out. There's only six up there. The town's misinformed by mistake that there's maybe 16 copies. You know how much 16 copies costs? I mean, I take a lot of hard-earned time and money out of my, out of my. Just to promote agricultural purposes for the town.
Can you hear guys, any more questions?
For Chris, actually, I had a question. Does the eight-foot fence permitted use for livestock, does that also pertain to the front of a property? Or is that still beholden to the four-foot?
It's a little unclear. There's height of fences in the RA, PRR, and PA-P districts. Fences on parcels used exclusively for residential purposes shall conform to the standards of subsection B above, which is other residential standards, which is the six feet in a rear yard, four feet to the side and the front. And then it says separately, fences on arms or residential properties used for keating, pasturing, or livestock shall be at a C maximum. Fence cannot be in the front yard. But there is another section that goes as if it's 15 feet from the property line in there.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Gentlemen, you heard the testimony from the applicant. You heard all the public and their comments.
Mr. Kamara, I've got one question. So my understanding, what we're looking at tonight is just the height of the fence. We have no survey to go by. What if it is, like you brought up, on, we need to make a provision stating that he needs to get a recent survey showing that, so it's not on the man that is.
Well, you can't put his fence on someone else's property, but the, what we're dealing with is the height here.
The height, just the height.
In terms of. The zoning officer asked for a survey. We're in the process of getting one. The problem was that when he contacted the surveyor to do it, he was so busy, he wasn't able to get it for us in time for this meeting. As a condition of approval, a required survey can be provided to you. So that's not a problem. It just wasn't provided up until this point. We've been trying to provide as much as your zoning officer may ask for, and we will provide that. In some survey, when that fence was put up, that property was marked out.
But we don't have a survey, Mr. Chapasco. So by you saying that, and a neighbor said, we have to see a survey for that.
I concur. I concur.
So.
If the board would like to continue this matter for this part of the matter, for us to get the survey, until we get the survey, we can do that.
We're, I think we're focusing on the height.
I understand.
Going to have to move it no matter how high the fence is.
I understand that.
The issue between the property owners, so there's a property line issue between the property owners. Nice to like to have a plan, just have a plan. Fences are doing it.
Plenty of time. All right, gentlemen.
I make a motion to deny the fence. I second that motion.
Motion in second. Dana DeCesare. Andy Hamel, second. Roll call.
Dana DeCesare?
A yes is mean deny.
Okay.
Yes.
Jim Ketchum?
Yes.
Andrew Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Gravener?
Yes, and I don't think they demonstrated the positive criteria. There's no hardship here whatsoever, that I see. And I do think that it'll substantially be detrimental to the public good. And probably impair the intent and purpose of the master plan. So I go yes. We've denied the eight-foot high fence. All right, next is the second version of this application, ZB 22-12, in the name of Paul Chapasco. This is for the appeal of the denial of the zoning officer. We're in-home officer's denial. As an in-home occupation.
I think a moment to once again, to the framework for this. This is not a variance application. It's a used variance application. No, a bold variance application. We're not looking at the positive and negative criteria. We go, there's a portion of the statute that sets forth. Allows an individual party to appeal a decision of the zoning officer. So in this case, the applicant applied for his own permit, and he was operating as a home occupation on the property. The business part of the property was qualified as a home occupation. The zoning officer denied. She states specifically as non-home occupation, that it needed to use variance. This request was denied. So tonight, the applicant has issued an review of the zoning officer's decision, and he has upheld it, overturned it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you. What I would say. 5D-72, a person has a right, whether it's the applicant, whether it's homeowner, whether it's a developer, whether it's a next-door neighbor, has a right to appeal a decision of the zoning officer to the Board of Adjustment. Once that's done, within 20 days, which it was done within 20 days of her denial, the. To immediately transmit to the board all of the papers constituting the record upon which the action to or from was taken.
20 days.
20 days has to file an appeal, which was done of the decision of the zoning. Time is required to immediately transmit to the board all papers constituting the record upon which the action appealed from was taken. This, if I recall, the decision from the, submitted, submitted was on April the 14th, I believe, was the date when we submitted the application for the home occupation. Again, based upon the. To make our application for that purpose. At that point in time, we submitted the application, and on that same day, it was immediately denied. The denial, as indicated, indicated that it was denied because it needed to use variance, denied because of septic, and it was one other item, and I can't find the specific application. But as far as anything that has been submitted dealing with the in-home occupation, none of that was ever submitted to this board until 4 o'clock this evening, when we finally got some documentation, which looks to me to be a memorandum and prepared by the. 2022, not on April the 14th, but as of June the 6th, 2022, that indicated why she denied it. So what I'm saying to you is that I'm going to object to any testimony by a zoning officer, by any engineer, by any planner, by any individuals dealing with anything after the date on which that notice. April 14th, 2022. That's what we're dealing with. I'm appealing the decision that was made by the zoning officer on that date. Whatever happens after that time is, happens after that time. But my appeal that immediately was filed was based upon the April the 14th date. I have to object here in the courts, wherever it may be, because any other testimony going into all of the other. Situation that this board has a right to, in accordance with the Usual Annuals Act, to have immediately transmitted to it all papers constituting the record upon which the action appealed from was taken. That documentation has not, was not provided to this board. There is, all she is relying upon is other documentation, 135 pages of which the board got, and all I expect, that based upon the June 6th date, that this board got that 135 pages on Monday, so that you had an opportunity to review it. I hardly had a chance to review all of the documentation, but what I did see was photographs taken after the date of her decision was made. I saw documentation and explanations to the board subsequent to. Dealing with what did she do on the day of the denial of the zoning permit? And if she doesn't have documentation to show that, then this board has to approve the zoning permit and allow, and overturn the zoning officer, because the zoning officer is, can't just come into this board and say, oh, he's got to apply for use variance. She's got to provide. Needs to be done. Other than that, you can't just go in front of, to this board or go in front of the judge and say, he needs use variance. Well, I filed a notice of appeal to the mere fact that I don't feel that we need to use variance. The zoning permit application based upon the criteria under Section 253, 190.110 of the Home Occupation Ordinance, and which we can go over. Having done that, except for the fact that at this point, it's a matter. Fence totally down, or having the four-foot fence put up would meet the rest of the criteria. Other than that, our opinion as we would go forward with everything else, will show you how the zoning permit application meets the home occupation. Well, go ahead.
Well, you got a minute to comment. Mr. Schwartz has done have. For now. Okay. As far as the information being transmitted to the board, I understand that's what the statute says. This board speaks once a month. That's what you consider given your hearings and your applications. I don't think the intent of the statute is that you may or may not just think it's part of the deal. I think that has to be transmitted, whether it be to me or to the other professionals, and then be prepared for the hearing and make sure you have what you need to have in the hearing. So I don't think that makes it possible for you to hear this because it wasn't immediately transmitted to you. Secondly, I don't disagree with Mr. Schwartz regarding the fact. Denial of the place. And that goes both ways. So what Mr. Schwartz presents can't be what his client's going to do for what he did after that date, with what existed on that date, 19 feet. Because that's a date at which the denial was in place. Anything presented after that, for instance, if it's photographs, if there's some photographs, if those photographs were taken after. Irrelevant if there's testimony that they actually represent what the condition was on the 14th, then it would be dismissed. As far as the documents being provided today for Mr. Schwartz, some of these documents, I did look at them. As far as I can see, other than the four-foot, it's about 10. Seen or is photographs of this client's property. I don't think it's anything that is new or surprising, and it needs to have evaluation. I think the zoning officer is supposed to be prepared to make a presentation and make a report to know what.
Mr. Schwartz?
Number one, this is what we're presenting it. Combination of your zoning officer and a combination of documentation from your solicitor. There was more that was presented, including videos and photographs that you're intending to be presented tonight, which I had not seen before. There's documents in here. Each individual item, there's certain items that certainly were items that were given to me before. There's certain items that were not given to me before. So to sprint on counsel, just before coming to this hearing, is as bad as. At the last minute. I agree that the basis of our zoning permit application and our presentation to you is as to what was in existence as of the April 14th, 2022. And I certainly have no problem in presenting that part of the narrative. As we go through all of it, I think you're going to find that coming into all of this, we're going to get back into some other, which I think is irrelevant issues, because we're again going back into the farm issue. We're going to go back into who's running what, who's doing what, and who was doing it as of April 14th, 2022. Meets all that criteria. So that being the case, if I may, I will go through what was submitted with the application. Paul, on the home occupation, the definition of home occupation shall be as follows. Point 10A of 253, 190.10. Within a detached, single-family dwelling unit or a building accessory thereto. Now, you're conducting that, your activity of, what's the name of your business?
Which one?
For the home occupation.
Oh, Sea Clear Enterprises.
The farm. And so when it comes to Sea Clear, what does Sea Clear do?
Sea Clear does selective tree pruning and tree care.
And where is that done?
It's on people's properties.
What would, is brought onto this property by Sea Clear?
None.
What is taken off of?
Any remnants of the material that we can not make use of.
The conducting of business for Sea Clear, where does that take place? On the property itself?
Other than the office, nowhere.
So we'll get into that. In a single-family dwelling unit or a building accessory, where is the office itself?
The office is in the red building.
The red building is what?
Red building is barn.
And since it was mentioned that the. Here mentions to us that that building is approximately seven feet from the property line as opposed to the requirement that it be, I believe, 20 feet from the.
Half at the front left corner, 10 and a half at the back left corner.
When did you buy this property?
Five and a half years ago.
When you bought the property, was the barn there?
Long time before I got there.
So you're saying that the seven-foot or the 11-foot side yard is pre-existing and not conforming to.
There's 10-foot there, so there's not seven-foot. There's 10.
Okay, but it's below the 20-foot. Now it's pre-existing before you bought the property.
That's correct.
The barn was there.
Yep.
And of course, if it's not 20 feet, it's not conforming to what that 20-foot requirement is.
Yep. Another thing I may have slipped through the cracks. Yep. Another thing I maybe slipped through the cracks when
The, they don't connect that. And when you bought the property, A certificate of occupancy for the property?
I did.
And when you got your certificate of occupancy, can you I believe we, we presented to the board a packet and it, in that packet is a certificate of occupancy that was issued. When did you buy the property?
Uh, it should indicate the rough timeframe. Like I said, I don't recall that specific days as time, but it was about five or six years ago.
Okay.
And we did get a, a certificate of occupancy. Phil Trumping was the zoning officer. I'm not sure if he came out or there's another person else came out.
I don't have it right in front of me at the moment, but to everybody this evening. So that, and you've indicated that as far as you understood, you hired Bob Milty and Hoffman Museum for the purpose of combining all the three lots into So your residence as well as the barn, as far as you know, understood, were on the same property?
That's correct.
And you're operating the, the office in the barn?
That's correct. It's how they
So you're, so as part of the application, you indicate onsite activities will be conducted within an office in the barn building and secondary to any uses
Only the, you know, there was permitted 400 pairs, where I think it's actually 375 to us.
The, is only operated in the office area of that building?
That's it. There's a solicitation, there's nothing.
What's, what's the rest of the building used for?
The rest of the building is used for all the farm equipment.
The part B such activity that no more than one non-resident may be employed? Or how many, how many residents or how many employees, including you, are on this property?
Uh, other than my secretary.
The, the, and we'll get into it later on, but the employees of Sea Clear that are in those trucks, are they hired by somebody to come onto that property?
Um, yeah, I hire them.
And under what company?
Under GG Farms.
So GG Farms hires Sea Clear?
Yep.
And I believe we've submitted previously as well as today, we've submitted numerous invoices showing that Sea Clear has been billing GG Farms for the work that is being done by Sea Clear onto the property. You should have numerous documents submitted. Numerous invoices that if you wish to mark the certificate of occupancy, which I will, I will find for you. What was the next number we had? The certificate of occupancy. And A11 is in your packet. You have numerous invoices from Sea Clear to GG Farms. And I assume that your is going to be operating for GG Farms on the property. You have to have, be billing them or doing something to make that representation.
Whatever the accountant says is what I do. I'm not so much of a tech.
So that's, so you have, you, you or your office worker prepares is billing GG Farms for the work that, that G, that Sea Clear is doing for GG Farms.
That's correct.
And when the trucks for, for Sea Clear Enterprises LLC is on the property, is it on the property, parked on the property?
Uh, no, no. All the time the trucks are there is when work is getting done to the part of that property.
So that, so that when those testimony, if there's whatever showing the Sea Clear trucks on the property, they are doing work for GG Farms.
That's correct.
As an example, I saw some photographs linking. A10 is the the date of February 22, 2006. There was a transfer of that on, by Stephen Rickenhauer, almost like, on 77, 2016. That's when they came out, inspected the property and including 4066 Tuckahoe Room as well as the barn.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. That's A10 and A11 are the invoices we're supposed to be presenting. I know earlier, before we even got into this, and before the zoning permit was even denied, there were Sea Clear trucks that were carrying wood off of the property. Can you explain that to us?
That's the, the wood that doesn't perform to our composting and it was like, kind of talked about earlier. We just kind of went over this, obviously.
That's wood waste?
Yeah, stumps, you know, when we excavated stumps from the property, we have their use form.
And GG Farms hires Sea Clear to remove that wood, wood waste from the property?
That's correct. We dispose them at Peach Country. Peach Country Tractor Garden Center, they're licensed by Variable Waste Company.
A12, we've submitted to the board also invoices from Peach Country Garden Center. Some invoices going back, this one's 514, 2022. There's another one, 514, 20 22. 517, 2022 as examples of 518, 2022, 518, 2022. I assume that what this is showing is representing what was done back when this application was denied. Peach Country was buying wood waste from GG Farms and being hauled away from this property. Was being hauled away on contract with Sea Clear. Correct?
So, so they way you said it, yeah.
What I'm saying to you, I understand. What you're saying to me is Sea Clear is hired to take the wood waste away from the farm.
Yes.
And takes it over to Peach Country Garden Center.
That's correct.
And the invoices, A12 that we indicated and shipped to GG Farms. And my understanding, you explained it to me was that these are invoices where, since it's wood waste from the farm, from the farm, and it goes to Peach Country, Peach Country actually charges GG Farms for the wood waste.
Yep.
But the hauling away of the, of this wood waste from your property is not wood else's property?
No, that would be a completely separate thing, you know, if somebody hired us to take the tree down. You know, the trucks that would go out there and then remove that waste from their property to Peach Country. Anything that was removed from this property was
If some, if you go after somebody else's property and there are trees that are taken down, what happened to that wood?
Uh, it goes to Peach Country.
Has any of that wood come back to this property?
No.
So the only time when you see wood on the back of one of these Sea Clear trucks is the wood being taken off of this property, taken over to Peach Country or perhaps someplace else, but taken over the
Barter in between farms. So we bartered, we get some of our stock, we haul this. We take some of their lots out of the clear and reuse and barter and do what you have to do to make ends meet.
Keep it going. But in doing that, it's, it's Peach Country, it's
The use of the trucks, that's it.
Use of the trucks by 4GG Farms hiring Sea Clear to do that.
That's correct. Yeah.
What we're seeing is no more than 400 square feet maybe used farm will be no larger than that which is allowed. And you indicated that the office in the, on the property is how large?
Uh, approximately 376. I always round to the decimal, it's about 370.
Exhibits 10, 11, and 12, which all, A13, A14, and A15.
I got, he did it 11 and 10.
Explain
Oh, just pictures of an office. A desk, a time clock, filing cabinet, paper shredder. That's all being used by Sea Clear Enterprises.
As your home occupation. A12 is
Is the in-home occupation GG Farms or is it Sea Clear?
The in-home occupation is Sea Clear Enterprises.
Did you say otherwise? Wait, I don't know whether I walked away and I heard something saying that GG Farms.
I asked him if the in-home occupation was GG Farms or Sea Clear.
No, we're saying that Sea Clear is operating as an in-home occupation.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay.
I'd have to clarify exactly how it's put down with people with the accountant. To the best of my knowledge, I am, yeah, I'll know if, you know, there's an percentage between me and somebody else or, you know, when it comes to that stuff, the accountant doesn't do that much of a job.
You don't know through the owner or
I don't know. Yeah, so how you file on tax purposes is not necessary. So my, my daughter may own, you know, 1% per se, but I'm, I'm, you know, when you file for tax purposes, there are different ways that the accountant can, maybe my wife or things like that. So to the best of my ability, it's, it's solely me.
So you, but you are, one way or another, you are an owner of
I'm an owner.
Farms and Sea Clear.
That's, that's correct. I'm an owner.
Photos of A10, but it's, A11, that's A14. Number 11. Show me what that is.
Uh, filing desk, some computer screens.
That's all part of the 400 square foot office.
376.
How do you know that?
Measured it.
A16, or A15. Exhibit 12 there, explain that also.
Computer screen, Michelle's trash can, Michelle's tight desk. Just some more filings.
So going along with the the 400 square feet may be used for such activity. And we said, when we submitted, the office in the barn will be no larger than allowed. And that's the office in the barn, which is no larger than the 400 feet that are allowed.
Yeah.
I know that I saw in skimming through all this documentation from the zoning officer today that her testament, her, her statements were that the barn is something in the area their feet is
See what 800 square feet is.
How much of
The engineer has the, the length and width of the buildings of that
How much, how much of that building, even if it's 700 square feet, how much of that building is being used for the office?
Uh, only 375.
The rest of it is not
So it's wider at the base and it closes up at the top.
I understand, but I'm just saying to you
Just 376, whatever.
That's the office.
Yep. Under 400 square feet.
If it was in your, the same thing I'm saying is the example is if it was in a house, it's only that 370 some square feet would be for
Probably a little less because
But the barn, I want to answer yours specifically. But the barn itself, 375 square feet of the barn is being used for the office, which needs photographs to be submitted. The rest of it is being used for the farm and for the purposes
That's correct. Yep. The law of works, yes.
Calling and accessory structures that on the site itself shall be, will be maintained. Are you maintaining the barn?
Oh, defying maintenance.
Tell me what you, what you're doing to maintain it?
Gutters, roof gutters, pressure treating, power washing. We clean the place. We're pretty decent job at it. When you say the residence, it's like
Your home where you live in the back there?
Oh, yeah. It's decked out to the nines. We, we got a lot of landscaping, we got to keep the place real clean.
So as of, again, and we're dealing with right now, A through D. Two, you've complied with all of those requirements?
Yes, I have. According to that.
And you maintain the residential character and visual appearance of the dwelling and the accessory structures of that barn and you, and the site, and the site itself will be maintained?
Yeah, I, I think I've done, you know,
Site itself, forgetting about for the moment, dealing with the farm part of it. Are you maintaining your property?
Yeah. No potholes. We keep the place very clean. Maintain the lawn. The lawn needs maintenance. The bushes, the shrubbery need maintenance. It's a lot to do there.
Activities shall be parked on the site. Such vehicles shall comply with revisions of 253, 190, 111, commercial vehicle parking. With regard to the property itself, what, what vehicles you indicated to me earlier that belongs to Sea Clear?
That's correct. Yeah. Now, now, not necessarily every single time it's the crane. I work on-site with my employees. So if somebody else is, you know, using the crane that day and I'm on-site and the crane's still tied up, I'll hop in another vehicle. But at the end of the day, the ordinance says pounds, whether it's the crane or a different type of truck. At the end of the day, there's just one truck at that location. It may change.
So during the day, you may, you have no more than one motor vehicle used by Sea Clear on the property. For, for, for Sea Clear, not for what you're using it And you may have some of these vehicles driving back and forth on the property.
Yes.
But they're not parked on the property.
No.
In fact, what we've also submitted to the board In fact, what we've also submitted to the board, which would be A16. From Peach Country Tractor, that indicates that... The first one I'm looking at is April 1, 2022. Quarterly rent, parking of commercial vehicles goes back to January... There's checks that attached. Another one goes back to October 1, 2021 as examples. Do you, where do you park your various trucks for Sea Clear?
At Peach Country Tractor.
And these bills and these checks are... Those commercial vehicles used by Sea Clear, when they're not on this property, as you just testified to, they're parked at Peach Country Tractor, either in Mulcah Hill or Williams Town.
Ah, Mulcah Hill.
Okay. Then you pay... And as of... Complied for the zoning permit, were they being parked at Peach Country Tractor?
That's correct, yes.
And that's what's indicating here on the invoice for starting date of April 1, 2022. They billed you quarterly rent for April, May. It looks like $450 for, I guess, each of the months.
That's correct.
And you pay that to Peach Country to park the vehicles over there.
That's correct.
And you are not parking the vehicles on this property in question tonight.
That's correct.
F says, other than as provided in subsection E, which are the trucks? All vehicular equipment used or associated with such activity may not be parked or stored onsite or on any public streets or rights away, but must be stored or parked on an off-street parking or storage area. And that again, as you just testified to, is parking it on Peach Country Tractor. G indicates signs should conform to the standards of 253-177 applicable to the residential district. And I indicated to you, then speak to the zoning officer, indicated you were allowed to have, if you wanted a sign, it can only be two foot by two foot. So you can have a sign... For your advertising of Sea Clear Enterprises, if you wanted to have it on your property.
Yeah, there's a sign out there.
You don't have a sign there. You have no intention of putting a sign up there.
No, it's not necessary. Everything's online nowadays.
And I even saw, so it was presented to me at 4 o'clock today, and you have a truck that is going around town or somewhere it's going and is advertising the Sea Clear.
Oh, yeah, it'll be advertised in the park pretty soon.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have a nice fillboard truck. We get the paint and say whatever we want on there.
You from doing that?
No, why would somebody stop me from advertising?
I see your question.
No.
Nope. H says, excepted provided in subsection E, which is the sign, no display of products, supplies, materials, tools, equipment, or other items used in the activity shall be visible from the adjoining street or property lines. Again, dealing with Sea Clear. Tree and Property Services. Are there any products, supplies, materials, tools, equipment, or other items used in the activity visible from the adjoining streets or property lines?
No.
The trucks, again, that are visible to your next door neighbors, who have all kinds of pictures to show us tonight. Those trucks... Clear's name on it, but they're being hired by G.G. Farms.
That's correct, yeah.
Has anybody told you, had you take them down? Take the names off of the trucks while you're using it for G.G. Farms?
No, I don't see why that would.
Is the fences shall conform with applicable zoning regulations that we got into. And at this point in time, you have to make a decision whether to take all the fences down or to put up a four-foot fence, correct?
Say it again.
Based upon the fact that the board denied your eight-foot fence when it comes to that section. This point, or is in order to comply with that section of the home occupation? And again, that's as of today, as opposed to April the 14th. At this point in time, you're either going to take down the fence totally or you're going to have a four-foot fence up there. Series.
We'll do what we gotta do to make it right.
J says, a home occupation activity may involve the creation, construction, and/or assembly of product or parts thereof onsite. From the occupation, shall not use any equipment or process that uses hazardous chemicals, creates noise, vibration, glare... ...including interference with the radio and television reception protected by neighbors. Again, we say we will comply. Now, again, we're going back to the complaints that everybody had earlier unrelated to this was that there's odors, or there's dust is blowing up. Blowing up on the property is coming from Sea Clear in its capacity as the tree and property services, or is it blowing up because of the farm operations?
The farm operations.
K says, no articles or service may be sold or offered for sale on the... By a resident thereof. Do you have any articles or service that you're offering for sale on your premises?
No.
Again, we're dealing with Sea Clear, we're not even dealing with the farm. No machinery or other equipment shall be used... In reception or adjoining properties. Have you had anybody say to you that any of your trucks operating Sea Clear Enterprises is in any way interfering with radio or television reception or adjoining properties?
No.
And M, such use shall not reduce the parking or yard requirements of the residential use. Engineer indicated that the only place where it seems to be out of compliance is the fact that the pre-existing nine conformings of the barn is not 20 feet off the property line, it's 10 or 11 feet off the...
Yes, yeah, um, yes.
But you weren't aware of when you...
No, it probably, like everything else, must have changed over time. There's a lot that changes, you know, every 15 years or so.
Were you aware to indicate anything in terms of the height of the barn?
Um, no.
You know whether the barn exceeds 35 feet?
It does, um, does not... Or six and a half feet. So you take that times two, you add 18, and you add the peak, you go to 6. You take that and...
So as far as you know, it's not exceeding 35 feet. And if it did, then again, we're in pre-existing nine conforming back when you...
The house is higher than the barn.
So just going deal, dealing with the zoning permit application. Is it your... Now, you complied with all the requirements of the township under the definition of home occupation conditions and compliance?
Uh, yes.
And you submitted your various exhibits, your petition and notice of hearing. And... Dealing with what we have on the property. Briefly make it clear, because it's not relevant to where we are. You have, tell me what you're doing on the property you've been going with for.
Um, we're operating a woodland, pine land. It's a... It's pine lands approved, it's county approved. And the land that was cleared was cleared by the county and was cleared by pine lands.
Was approved by them, you mean? Not, they didn't physically clear it, they approved it?
They approved it. Soil learning curve. I found that, you know, the state, county, and municipality, they all have different rules, different ordinances. Things aren't very clear, it clashes. But I guess it doesn't matter.
A17 is Gloucester County Soil Conservation District, where they gave you approval as of...
Yeah, this kind of goes to some of the tickets. When we had gotten tickets by, you know, Matt, this is all right. I think it should be your nephew, cousin? Yeah, um, did, you know... The paperwork was in the mail, so we...
I just want to make sure that as we deal with it...
Permit to clear.
You have the permit to clear from Gloucester County Soil Conservation.
That's correct.
And you had, and you had... 17, A18 is a letter which was also submitted to the board, January 27, 2021, where the Department of... Welcome to you in as a New Jersey Forest Stewardship Coordinating Committee, welcoming you to the New Jersey Forest Stewardship Program.
Yeah.
Welcome. And A19... There was a question raised by the zoning officer at some point that you have not applied for farm assessment. Can you explain that to us?
So how farm assessment works is you give... Five acres or more under till or under the woodlands management or be acting as a commercial farm, you don't meet that five-acre criteria, producing 50,000... It's definitely possible, we just, we didn't want to go that deep. We wanted to kind of give a sense of... So we do meet the criteria indicated in pine lands. We're in the... The actively devoting for two years. They have to do inspections and then they approve you on the third year. So next year we should be...
So the letter of July 20... Formally in assessment, and you're going through the process of getting formally assessed for that property?
Yep, that's correct, yeah. I've spoken with the town lieutenant that runs that at the county and, you know, she'll be coming out late fall. We seem to see...
A20, and I believe we've submitted to the board, is the entire forest stewardship plan that explains your approval on January 12, 2021. 2021, where you were given the various approvals for the forest stewardship plan.
That's correct.
For your property. And A21 is your forest stewardship certificate?
Yep.
That was given to you for that purpose as well?
That's correct.
So at that point... I assume, and I'll go further with it, but I assume that what you're saying to me as part of all of that is that all was submitted to... And there's the rest of the plan. The plan is something in the area of... 34 pages.
Exempt that I was told I had.
This was first we do it?
Yeah.
That is that we've submitted to the board. You have the forest stewardship plan, A20 we've submitted, showing. And the forest...
Yep.
And it's being farmed by Ploss of Chapaska, which now your accountant has had you naming it as G.G. Farms.
Yeah, for the farm, it's, yeah.
So the farm address of 4015... You're operating it on this property?
The, yes.
And as you're going forward with it, you admit that somewhere along the line there may be a mistake or something was done contrary to what they wanted and you're correcting as you go along?
Yeah, so... State forest are indicated that we just removed a few too many trees in certain parts of the forest. And my state forester had to write an amendment, which he did. And we have that thing... About 200 trees, about knee-high. So they're going in the ground every day. That's going to be in before August first will be done. And then the state forester's not even coming back out. They should... Because the, I see eye to eye, I comply correctly with the state, I comply correctly with the county. Only, you know, problems and challenges and things that I seem to be doing came correctly. Against anybody, I just, I don't know how the, I'm having more easier times working with the state and the county than the township.
Mr. Schwartz, how is this getting us closer to an in-home occupation?
That the testimony that you're going to be putting in front of you is that all the trucks that we have on this property are operating... Tree and conservation, tree and conservation site as opposed to operating for G.G. Farms. A22 indicates of Gloucester County Soil Conservation, the project that is exempt. They also have a letter... A23, which is from the Pine Lands Commission. And in that letter, it indicates that on page two, if the outdoor portion of the use is eliminated and attached degrees, the remaining use qualifies as home occupation. Please note that both attached land use ordinance and the... Please note that both the attached land use ordinance and the CMP provide that the establishment of a home occupation within an existing dwelling unit or accessory structure does not require application to... So you have not submitted to the Pine Lands because based upon this letter or you didn't feel you needed it? That's the Pine Lands letter?
No. So that, yeah, that indicates, this was when I wasn't... This is before you got involved. So this was when I was working directly with the acting zoning officer, Rosemary. You know, I thought I was doing the right thing, working with the town, and, you know, that's where it got...
Letter of September twenty-second, twenty-one, letter from Pine Lands A twenty-three. Do you have any other documents, photographs, whatever that you need to be aware of, indicate that the whole Not farming, except where it's being hired and we've indicated on the invoices by G.G. Farms.
Correct.
And I indicate, you indicated and submitted to everybody You submitted for the board review, the Right to Farm Act in New Jersey?
Yeah, you might want to just go
Tail on it, I assume that what, what A twenty-four, which is the Right to Farm Act, is indicating you have the right to farm on, on the property in New Jersey?
Yep.
And if there's a complaint of the
It's the C A D B, so I'm, pretty much the way the law is written, I'm not supposed to hear if you guys have an issue, or the residents have an issue, and this is why I tried to explain this on the Correct words, but this is basic knowledge you could look up, and what the law says is the law says if neighbors feels if I'm in violation, the municipality feels I'm in violation, they're not supposed to side-tate me like With complaints, like if I'm, they're supposed to write to the C A D B, that's how the law calls it.
So that, when we're dealing with this, you're saying that G.G. Farms is farming the property?
G.G. Farms.
And Is working for G.G. Farms and doing anything that G.G. Farms needs to be done and is being invoiced for?
That's correct.
And eventually, once G., the farm makes some money, we'll be able to pay the C Clear back?
Yep, that's correct.
And, and what is your intention in terms of the, well, right now, what, what, there was conversation about mulch on the property, is any of that mulch hauled away by C Clear?
Sell mulch, you have to have a license to do that.
What happened with the mulch and the piles that are on the property?
The piles, that's all the debris, the chips, the woods clearing, all the stuff that wasn't able to be processed. It's called compost, and so you can put it all in one big pile and turn it over every so often, and you're able to, you know, grow. The gentleman down there today I mean, just admire the quality of compost, you know, when I went down to purchase the seeds, I was explaining to them the type of soil, and they were explaining to me how rich the soil was.
Looks like a mess because you've got these piles of the compost there, you've got hearing of the ground, you've got the wood that's there, that's all part of the farm.
Yep, yeah, there's another one on me.
And again, any, anything that C Clear does is done on behalf of and under invoice from Other documentation you want this board to be aware of, dealing with your in-home occupation?
Um, yeah, there was a little thing that, you know, I wanted to hand to you. And after that, I would be appreciative, just kind of, I was farmers, you things. Should I have the updated pictures too?
The wood pictures?
Yep, yeah. The unsightly view?
In your packet, if you're handing it out at the moment? Thank you.
So if they, it's only one, two, whoever needs to get
The Farmers Creek showing on the front, and then there is photographs of the property itself.
Yep.
Can you explain to the board what this is all showing?
I just showed different portions of the property that You know, how nice it looks, I guess, when we take down the windscreen tomorrow, Mr. Grabner, when he drives by, he'll be able to see how nice Statement that's not beyond sight and all. Some of the pictures indicate the neighbors' property, the Charlones, and during the clearing that we did, which was approved, we offered And they said no, so all the vegetation that was left there is now reupowing, you're right back over, they take care of the property to the best of their ability, I think they do a good job, but it, when you're dealing with vine growth and things like that, that Take, you know, a lot of hard work and tools that they may not have.
So, so again, while it's not directly relevant to the in-home occupation, you're saying, what you're showing us is here's what
Y'all don't process today, yes.
Okay, and that G.G. Farms is hiring C Clear to do work out there, and C Clear is still operating, your, your position is as an in-home occupation, the only thing that C Clear is doing on this property for C Clear And you have the one employee there plus yourself?
That's correct.
Do you see clear trucks that are on the property or trucks that are being hired by G.G. Farms, where they're driving through to go to your house?
Yep.
And another one's taking off the property?
That's correct.
I'm going to interrupt for a second, so you're, when you indicate this is showing where you're recently established, which shouldn't be considered by the board, what I
Did this go back to A twenty-five, can you tell me, just basically show what the part, your property is with some changes back on April fourteen, twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah, lots of changes, that's what they indicated, indicated Prior, again, you know
Back on April fourteen, twenty-twenty-two, what did, what did the property look like?
It didn't look as nice as it did, it wasn't as cleaned up, you know, we were just coming out of wear, so we were dealing with some wet ground. Unfortunately, the iron's just straightened out as, as things dried out.
And all that area at that point was still being operated by G.G. Farms at that point?
That's correct.
Not by C Clear?
That's correct.
Do you have any other documents you want the board to be aware of, dealing with the C Clear home occupation?
Yes, sir.
And is it your opinion that Occupation termination by the zoning officer, the zoning permit to operate your home occupation, your C Clear as a home occupation?
C Clear's day?
Yep.
In form or whatever, I think, one of the many clear farmers on points, like, just a couple of clarifications, sort of, to say to the board, you know, sort of be able to have some understanding, so is Chapasko the Consolidated three lots?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, yes.
But you consider it a problem, so on that property, you have your own in the back, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then you have these two lots?
That's correct, yep.
And then, so you have all that Two single tenant dwellings, is there a second house that I've entered?
Um, yeah, and so just to clarify, this is kind of like why everybody has a right to farm practice.
Who's in that house?
Uh, my mother-in-law and my sister that works for
You live in the other house?
That's correct.
In the other barn? You have any kind of plan for it, like, to show where things are, or the diagram? I think it's diagram, then sort of, for a minute? To clarify to the board regarding you bringing guilty to illegal in-home occupation, so you think that at some point you're guilty to a violation of the
Yeah, that was, what you see You know, Romeo and, and just, I got fed a bunch of untruthful things, even Matt, not that I have an issue with Matt, Matt's a good guy, but I think Matt was being told what to do because, you know, he wasn't licensed in it. Things, so basically, you know, it was, hey, work with us on this, we're going to stop all violations, and, you know, you're going to work with me, we're going to close paperwork, yada, 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 and it completely You know, everything had been kind of like, you know, drawn out further than the truth, so, you know, call me young and dumb, if Len had been involved earlier on, we wouldn't have that, you know, but it's, it's a mistake.
I think there's Mark Protection, recent letter moved from the Bureau of twenty-twenty-two, indicating that you're non-compliant?
Yeah, just read that thoroughly, that's all the joy.
Oh, I did, it says
Before everybody heard of
New Jersey Forest Service Southern Regional Region The lower half of the property, the more of the farms in the assessment program, this woodland property has been apparently to be in non-compliance with NJAC, this notice of non-compliance is based on the following, active in the Plan is not going to be followed, clearing of the property has resulted in less than five acres of forest, a plan amendment is needed to address non-compliance status.
Okay.
Are you saying that you are now in compliance?
Uh, no, the amendment has to be written, so this is May twenty-third, and what are we, June sixth, right, so this is less than three weeks, I don't think that the state works that fast.
Coming out to their property on maybe eighteen?
Yeah, now, um, yes, now my forester has written an amendment, so pretty much the state forester came out, along with some other people that were welcome, and, you know, the state forester and my forester are going to be working You know, we comply correctly, so the state forester, Eric, from Harper's Ecological, has written the amendment out.
The other exhibit was A twenty-three, which your Number twenty-second, twenty-one, which I don't want to read in the prior, if you want to, again, but you see on the second page that based upon, it's available on Escape business, looking at outside development growing, approximately one, one zero nine acres of block thirty-nine is used for activity associated with commercial escape use. Nine acres of block thirty-eight, thirty-nine is used for nursery and park. Based upon this outside development associated with the use and proposed use would not be found support in this definition of home occupation.
I'd have to see that, just read that.
Explain it, probably, A twenty-three. That was because they received a notice of violation?
Now Got the notice of violation is when I pled guilty to the tickets, so this is again, me just not being advised properly, you know, basically, you know, what Len has taken, you know, numerated The same thing ongoing the entire time, nothing has really changed, I just thought, you know, do the right thing, you know, give the township some money, start to work with their zoning officer, and this is what I got, I got a big slap in the face.
And nobody forced me to plead guilty, nobody
Yeah, I was told by the zoning officer, plead guilty is a sweet deal, I got the tax message to prove it.
And the judge, you just tell the judge you're being
I mean, you know, I guess a person's word is not as good as what it used to be, you know, that, you know, when I'm being told, I'm, you know, it's a good deal, you should take the deal, we're going to work together, you know, you know, I figure, hey, a thousand Dollars behind us, it's going to save me the attorney fees and things like that, and once we pled guilty to some of the tickets, and I just won't even recall exactly what they're on, there are so many tickets, and And Matt wrote the ticket, I said, Matt, why don't you come out and measure the length, you know, he never did, he wrote the ticket, he didn't figure it out, I don't have heard. So we got bombarded with all these tickets, and my mindset was, we're all members It's not how this is, an average person can't come in here and know how all this stuff goes without an attorney, it's not right, you should be able to work with people directly.
Now, the finance about the home occupation, I'm letting it be. Communicated that if you work on site with employees, so which employees are you working on site, I'm a little confused because you have these two entities on your property now Specifically, would you work on site with employees?
So it is legal for one person to own multiple entities, correct? I just wanted to clarify that for everybody, you have to repeat that, and I have that Len here exactly what he said.
When you're testifying, testifying by the owner of a vehicle, you're standing at the end of the day, there's only one, and then when you're doing that, you say, when you're working on site during the day with your employees?
Um, the C Clear enterprise employees, again, we are, we're contracting C Clear to carry out different things on the farm. Appreciate that, thank you, sir.
Okay, I think, Rosemary, I think it's time to hear the other side of the story, I guess.
Okay, so, so one of the things that I guess has been discussed So I did print out the tax records for four zero six six, Tuckahoe Road, today at eight o'clock AM, so it clearly shows that four zero six six is only three So it has not been consolidated, I did see the other properties in there, thirty-eight and thirty-three, blocks thirty-eight, thirty-three, they're not consolidated, but this is, you know, a record, public record that the lot Something else that Mr. Chapasko had said this evening is that he had the septic was fine when he had the inspection and everything, he has a current notice of violation
It has nothing to do with the septic system, we're not in here to deal with septic.
My denial stated septic system.
Again, I object on the record again, because we're dealing here with home occupation, we're not dealing with whether or not buildings in this Chapasko Is or is not in compliance with whatever Gloucester County Board of Health is dealing We're getting way far off the
Thank you, but it was part of my denial. Thank you. Um, but it was part of my denial, so I wanted to bring that up. There was a reason for it. It's in your packet. It is an exhibit. The Pinelands, um, certificate, the Pinelands violation was not based on a summons. It was based on, uh, my copy of my report and their environmentalist and who actually sold the site and reported back to Chuck Coroner along with the pictures of the site that were presented to them with my violation. And that's the reason Chapasco that no further clearing should be done, no further activity should be done. That was in 2021. I believe it was August 23rd, 2021. Close. It's late. So, um, exactly why I made my decision. It wasn't that I didn't try to work with Mr. Chapasco. I worked with him several, had several meetings, uh, back and forth emails, trying to get him to comply. Uh, he says that, you know, uh, he expressed that I would not he has not submitted any applications except for the two that we're hearing tonight. I started working here in April of 2021. The two applications that were submitted were submitted just within the last couple of months and we're here tonight for those two applications. Regarding the money he spent with the township, but we haven't received any other applications other than the applications we're hearing tonight. So number one, it says definition of home occupation. Chapasco lives at 4015 Hancock Avenue and the business is operating at 4066 Tuckahoe Road. It is an illegal rental property in violation with the Gloucester County Board of Health for failure several employees, operating equipment, trucks and, and the office. See attached pictures. Um, also regarding the, uh, garage, that garage is, he says barn. It's listed on the tax assessor's records and six square feet. I see the pictures that he presented tonight show a little portion of the corner area where the secretary's desk is. I don't see the rest of the garage, any pictures of what, what's in the rest of the garage. That's two times the size of what's a Um, it's hard to understand how someone has an office in a garage that doesn't have the lavatory. And what's the other use? Because that garage may need to have a firewall that's fire rated in between the two uses. But there's no permits obtained for that either. It was under C regarding the garage. D, the applicant has changed the visual appearance of his property from front to back without approvals being obtained. Please see the attached pictures and I'm going to evening and, but they're also in your, in the board's packets. Mr. Schwartz thing regarding pictures that were obtained after April 14th. So these are all before April 14th. Will we continue?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, under E, it says no more than one motor vehicle shall be parked on the site. As you'll see in the pictures, there's multiple vehicles parked on the all over the site. But some pictures you'll see that they're almost in a parking schedule where they stay there. So you'll see that he obviously has those vehicles, his cranes, dump trucks, box trucks, other commercially decorated trucks advertising his business, storing uh, are there all the time. The applicant, uh, under F, uh, regarding the vehicle equipment and associated state or public streets or in the right of ways and must be stored and parked on the off-street parking and storage area. The applicant and his employees have been operating, storing, removing equipment to and from the property with commodities and parking, commercial equipment on the property. No, I'm sorry. Employees have been operating, storing, removing equipment to and from the property with commodities, which, when I say commodities, uh, I believe he testified tonight that it's just some wood and stuff and scrap and useless materials. Trees stacked all the way up in these trucks that have no top to them. And he pulls them out from this property onto the county road, which again, I would have to say that I believe that that would require a county permit.
I have to object to this point because, uh, it sounds to me like, um, Ms. Flaherty is testifying as she's, as if she's an expert as to, uh, things of that nature. She's going far, far afield from she's trying to get this board to believe that she knows everything that has to be done with the, uh, uh, trucks. She's trying to explain to this, this board that she knows everything there is about lumber and she knows everything that, that comes off this property.
We gave you a jail. Let her finish her testimony.
I'm putting the, I'm putting the, uh, objections on the record. So it's there for the court.
Thank you, Chairman. Under G, it says signs shall conform to the standards of 253177. Signs have been put on businesses and temporary small signs, uh, see clear hiring employees, uh, Paul's Got Wood. Uh, they've been put at all the intersections and I had to take them all down last year at Christmas. All over the place. So, uh, he is advertising a business there. And obviously again, the need for an employees and he also has this property that, uh, is illuminated and everything that you could see from the neighbor's property. And that's also in the pictures that I have. So that's also something that's going on. Under H, it says except as provided in subsection C, no display of product supplies, materials, tools, equipment or other items used in this activity shall be visible from adjoining street and property. Eight foot green fence provided some screening from the roadway. The sides of the property have been exposed to the neighbors surrounding the property up until last week, whereas the owner decided to continue to install the eight foot green fence down the sides of the property. Through is see through at some sections and the equipment piles of logs, mulch and cranes and equipment can still be seen. See attached pictures. So, you know, you know, the fence is not things it's providing because the people can still see right through it. And, you know, you can see everything that's going on at the property. So it's not any question tonight that the residents are upset. That's not residential. Fences shall conform to applicable zone regulations.
I also want to object again, uh, for the record, that I believe the testimony that's being presented is of a memorandum officer prepared on June 6th, 2022. She's referring to it at that time. Again, as the solicitor indicated, we're dealing with April 14th, 2022. This is a report that she's presenting to this board that she just prepared two days ago. This is the denial and it might notice of appeal.
Um, with that, I'm going to have to say that I prepared a memorandum to Mr. Chapasco, August 24th, 2021. Either the use variances, all the problems that were on the property at that time. So that's well before, you know, obviously the denial. Uh, I've been working with him this long and I'm, I'd like to present this to the board as an exhibit and as part of testimony.
Was it dated that?
August 24th, 2021.
Let's just clarify that. It's a fair point, Mr. Schwartz. So did your report today there today or is that just when the report dated today?
No, the report, it was given to him back in August of 2020, 21.
Right. What are you reading today? Is that helping that what the board, helping that what conditions exist if it causes you to deny these?
What caused me to deny the permit?
So just clarify if, you know,
Yeah, and I'm only interpreted versus what Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Chapasco interpreted it.
Excuse me, Rosemary, can you clarify that the photos that were supplied are from the same date that Mr. Brody is referencing? It's not from yesterday, correct?
No, it's from before. So under J, it says a home occupation activity may involve the creation, destruction and or assembly of products or parts thereof on the site. However, the occupation shall not use any equipment hazardous chemicals or creates noise, vibrations, glare, fumes, odors or electrical or electronic interference, including interference with radio and television. Majority of my complaints that I receive pretty much on a daily basis from the neighbors.
I have to object. This is hearsay.
Well, they are here tonight in case anyone would like to speak with them directly.
So does it sound like I'm making it clear on, on the, on the record.
So again, they're here tonight. So if, if the board would like to speak to them, but we do have a video this evening. If the board would like to see it of the fumes and everything that they're subjecting.
May I ask when this video was taken?
See that this is working.
Before the, before the board starts reviewing this, can I ask when this was
Well, I have so many, I, I can find one that I believe it's before April 14th. Yes.
This is May 12th, 2022.
Okay.
Well, that's, you know, the only thing I would say is the only way we can
I don't know.
Find out is if that represents activity that was taken place before.
There's so many.
May I ask the date of that?
What's, what's going on in the background? Sounds like the lights have been altered. There's like a microphone in the background.
Are we looking for the date? Is that what we're looking for? This one I have to cross again. Is this one came through a neighbor to our office?
The neighbor that's here, the C P.
It was taken by a neighbor. So it's, so it's not relevant for this, uh, zoning officer to testify to it. She did not, I assume you didn't hear this.
I went to the site after the neighbor had sent it to me.
Were you there on that site at that, when that video was taken?
Yes, I was.
And you heard exactly everything that's there? And what was the date of it? You don't know the date of it?
I believe it was in April, around April 7th or something like that. There was, there's, there's so many, Len.
Video was taken. You went to the site. Did you put it on the records?
Yeah, I have, I have records. I don't have them with me. Like you don't
The record. She's testifying. She's saying she needs, she has a record.
Video that it needs the right date.
No more. I'll move one. I don't, I don't think it's really relevant. I think the board gets the idea. Um, under K, it says no articles or service may be sold or offered for sale on the premise, except such as may be produced or activities as clinics, hospitals, barber shops and beauty parcs, luncheonettes, bed and breakfasts. Luncheonettes, bed and breakfasts, homes, animals, animal hospitals, mus individual instruction shall be deemed, shall not be deemed home occupation under the terms of this definition. I put the commercial uses on the property needs to be properly identified. The owner does not live at this property and home occupations are types of businesses that are a little disturbance to the residents that surround the property. This application encompasses three properties that are zone residential and have been used illegally for commercial business activities. Presently, the Pinelands property is not an in-home occupation. Sorry, I'm getting a little thirsty. Under 11 says no machinery or other equipment radio, television reception or adjoining properties. The complaints received on a daily basis speak to the lack quality of life for the surrounding residents with machines running day and night. Cranes operating at the site, loads of material coming to the site, loads of logs.
This is another objection. This is, this is, everything she's talking about is supposedly coming from other people. She didn't say she observed those items.
I observed the items. Um, it's on the picture there. Four seven fourteen, four seven 22 or four eight 22. It's in your packet. It's in the packet of pictures I just sent you. It's, uh, also, uh, we received complaints. The manager and I went to the site sites and they were taking them to Peachtree Country.
That day, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's see about that.
So we did see that.
Were you guys asked to leave that day or?
No, that wasn't the day. Maybe that's another person. Okay, you got it.
Yeah.
I'll wait for you.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, under M, it says such usage shall not reduce the parking or your requirements of the residential use. I say currently there is no residential duplex. See attached pictures. So with that
I object to the reference of this property. Number one, discussing the single family home, which I object to, a reference to it as being a duplex. It's not part of what is in front of this board this evening. It's another, it's a matter that will be dealt with in the municipal board. She shouldn't be referring to something as a, that she believes is a duplex when it's not a duplex.
Um, I'm, I'm prepared for it. I was at the property on March 29th. And I did the inspection. They know that I seen the site. They know that I was behind the guy who seen the site.
Still going to raise an objection. That's at all to do with the in-home occupation. What does that anything to do with the farm? We're getting way off. We're getting, we're getting into other areas that this board should
You got into other areas as well.
I'm getting in, we're getting in the area we can't testify to because we're dealing with criminal complaints that she's filed against us. We can't bring them in front of this board. This board has nothing to do with whether or not this is a single family home or the duplex unless we make an application. The, the, the citation that I got from to me, the application for, uh, the landlord tenure registration, which I did. She then went in and she saw the property. She is now trying to say the duplex. She says, why don't you apply for zoning permits while I can deny it? So she can bring it in front of this of, of our application. We're getting far afield from what we're dealing with.
I think welcome, uh, the objection is going, we're opening up an objection.
Okay.
I think the residences are relevant. Something taken place with better residents or assessors of buildings. They have to talk about the residents. I don't think she might want
Thank you.
That's not the residents.
You know, lastly, you know, you know, when you apply for a permit for an in-home occupation, we are looking at a singular property, not three different properties. The application was filed for three different properties versus a singular property. Um, with that alone, the with that being said, uh, that concludes my report. I stand by it.
Yeah, Mike. I think the other obvious one would be the, um, compliance of the fence. At the time the line, you denied it, that fence was not an approved fence.
The fence had already been installed, um, you know, in the front. We had spoke about the fence. Uh, just last week, he I have never been in the office in the barn because I'd never met at this application.
Or after, after the application was submitted on that day, on April 14th, if you didn't go, go to the office or call Mr. Chapasco, ask him if you can go in and see the office.
No.
You have no idea what, how much of the barn is the actual office?
No, I don't. That's your, that's your burden of proof, not mine.
Now, my burden of proof is to prove to this board and your burden of proof is to prove to this board that we're doing How do you, how do you know what, what the trucks that are on the property, how do you know what they're actually being used for?
I don't.
Okay. How do you, tell me trucks have been stored on the property?
I can only reflect to the pictures that I provided to the board tonight.
Let me ask you for the dates.
I need my pictures back. And Chairman, for the record, I just wanted to give you the printout from the tax assessor on the property that is used with the, the size of the barn is actually These don't have dates, but these. This says 10/26/21. Amount of water laying all over red and ruts.
I asked you what trucks
You said what was it showing?
I was asking you what trucks were, you should have the dates on which trucks were stored on the property.
3/11/22, 3/11/22.
What time of day was that?
I have no idea during the course of the workday.
Who took the pictures?
I did. 3/25/22.
During the day?
During my workday.
You said and they were stored there? And they were stored there overnight?
They don't look like they've moved. I'll put it that way.
7/22 and the other day was April whatever.
It's the same vehicles that are there in every picture.
And, and your, your testimony is that those trucks never moved from that, from that site?
On the site.
You're saying they're on the site, but you also testified that they were parked there. They were stored on the site. How do you, I'm asking you, how do you know that these vehicles were stored on the site?
Because they were stored been there. They're there. They're in every picture. They go back and they're still there. They're still there in the pictures that you, that after the day I
How do you know they were stored on the site and not being there, being used by the farm?
I don't, but you know what? Mr. Chapasco does have a video camera. Maybe he could provide that to the, to the board. No, maybe we should have a copy of the video of the site. You have the video cameras that you were nice enough to let us know. Maybe we could look at the footage of those.
And has been storing commodities on the property? What commodities is stored on the property?
Wood, mulch.
And where did the mulch come from?
Actually, the wood and forestry management used that they come, it's stuff that was on the site.
I object.
Okay. Well, I'm just telling you what he said.
Is he here?
I'm not a wood specialist.
I understand that.
But I guess we should probably have him here.
Well, you didn't bring the
If you've already been to
It's after 10:30. I've been at it all day.
I'm not
Taking any breaks. I'm not complaining. I'm asking you to slow down and say one at a time. I I don't need your attitude.
All right, let's, let's I don't want her, no. I don't want her. I want her to come in here. I don't want her anywhere. Well, you're, I'm not paying for her. Your, your township apparently hired her to come in here and she's giving me a wise-ass remark.
Enough. She's been giving you remarks. She told you to slow down.
I'm willing to slow down, but I want
If you recall. Let's move on here. I mean, this is getting
The logs The logs on the property, you're saying is, are logs that are from
No, I'm not saying that.
You have, you have no idea?
No, I don't.
Okay. The signs that are on vehicles or throughout the township are not, are not signs on this property?
Except for the ones on the side of the truck and the illuminating sign that I have in the pictures.
And the backo noise is, is not backo noise that you, you did not visually see?
Backo noise. I've been at the property several times with Mr. Chapasco. In fact, a friend of mine was, was riding the backo.
And you said the logs were, were brought onto the property. When did you see that?
I said logs were coming from the property.
And you said you had the logs to and from the site?
Yes.
When did
I stand corrected on that.
Okay. You can see your logs have That's all the questions I have right now.
That's it? Rosemary, are you finished?
I am.
Is it necessary to the public?
I think they're
They already spoke.
I don't know.
Regarding this?
And keep in mind
I make a motion to open to the public.
My second.
Again, we're, we're getting into the question of April 14th, 2022, and whether
You made that point several times. Thank
Oh, I have to keep making
Testimony that people gave the last time was for the fence. So if they want to express the same thing now, unfortunately.
Yeah, what Rosemary said is true.
You have to come up.
I need you to give me your name again.
You have to be sworn in again?
Yeah, Carl Billy. Yeah.
Come on.
I do. I swear that when I say it's true. Yeah, what Rosemary
They are there. There's a green container there now. He is operating his business in and out of there. It basically, it doesn't matter if it's GG Farms, it's Clear Tree, it, it's the same guy. It's the same guy. We're, we're paying some money from GG Farms. Same guy. I mean, you gotta, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, Donna. We don't realize this is the second hearing, so we reside adjacent to the property.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'd like to know from the trucks that he's talking about, how does he know that they are any way related to See Clear Tree Company as opposed to GG Farms? They're out every day. And how do you know that what is being used the trucks for is not being
Because they're parked there. They take their trees right on the side of it.
How do you know that the trucks that are being used there are not being used for GG Farms?
It's parked on the property.
Come on. That's a stretch. You know that.
It is.
Anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward.
How do we know you're a real lawyer?
Ray, I'm on. We're postponing. We're voting.
And then we'll, and then we'll deal with it in court. Because I'm not going to put up with people doing the thing
Raise your voice.
You brought the police up here before. You want to bring
Ma'am, please come forward.
My name
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do.
Name and address for the record.
ZZO, 53 Wolford Avenue, Franklinville, New Jersey, 08322. It's no, I know many business people who have businesses all work together. So I'm sure the neighbors don't know each and everything that goes on between two businesses. It's not illegal to have two businesses. It's fortunate Paul found two properties that attached. No one else moved to buy those properties. There, that was in between the Charloons and Paul's property that was owned by a totally different person that was wooded. They never made any move to go buy that property as long as they were there.
The question is whether this
Home occupation. And I don't like all the tuckahoe. I'm sorry. I think that the township is being unfair. I think that you have some kind of relationship with the Charloons because when we I'm sorry. Don't, don't compliment me, son.
Sit down, please, ma'am.
And the whole time you, and the whole time you were, and the whole time you were talking
No, no. No.
The whole you had a major decision.
Ma'am?
I have a question. Can I, can I get clarification on something just because I live
We've got three in again.
Okay. Danielle Jackson.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give.
471 Hancock Avenue, Bloomstown. I